It is 5:01 and with nine of nine board members present, we'll call this meeting to order. And tonight, the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Owen.
Please stand. Place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of announcements. Several board members will be attending the Tennessee School Board Association's Leadership Conference and Annual Convention in Nashville this weekend. We look forward to sharing information with other board members from across the state. On Tuesday, November 7th, there will be a system-wide in-service day, so our students will have a holiday from school on that day. I saw Commissioner Randy Smith, I believe chairman now, Randy Smith was here earlier. I want to recognize him. We have a very ambitious agenda tonight. Are there any changes to it? Okay, seeing no changes, can a motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Several brief updates for you this evening. Vine Middle Magnet School Campus Manager Clarence Swerengen has been nominated for the 2017-18 National Life Changer of the Year Award. Sponsored by the National Life Group Foundation, Life Changer of the Year recognizes and rewards the very best K-12 educators and school district employees across the U.S. who are making a difference in the lives of students by exemplifying excellence, positive influence, and leadership. Congratulations to Principal Tim Berry, who was selected as this year's valedictorian of the distinguished administrator honor roll for the Tennessee Association of School Librarians. This is an exceptionally well-deserved recognition for his work in collaboration with Buzz Thomas and Amber Roundtree and a variety of stakeholders to secure funding and renovate the library at South Doyle High School. Our fourth opiate abuse prevention community conversation was held on October 26th at Hall's Middle School. One hundred and thirty-six people attended at Bearden, one hundred and fifty-seven people attended at South Doyle, one hundred and twenty people attended at Fulton, ninety people attended at Hall's Middle. The total number of people who attended all the meetings was approximately five hundred. While we certainly want to reach more people, I think this was a good way to help parents and guardians facilitate conversations about recreational drug use with their children. Also like to thank board members that did attend one of those meetings, so thank you for doing that for us. On October 27th, Cedar Bluff Middle School hosted twelve students from Knoxville's sister city, Muria Ran, Japan, along with their educator chaperones. Muria Ran, and apologize if that pronunciation is not correct, hosts an essay competition each year with twelve middle-school-aged children, winning the privilege to represent the city here in Knoxville. The delegates are hosted by students and their families from eighth graders attending Cedar Bluff Middle. This is a unique experience that has created a bridge between the two cultures, with students and staff from Cedar Bluff also having the opportunity to visit Japan, where they in turn were welcomed by the mayor and hosted by Japanese students and their families. On November 8th, students from Knox County Schools will be joined by Oak Ridge City Schools and area private schools to try to break the Guinness World Record for the most number of students coding at one time. The current record is one thousand students, so we hope to be the new world record holder after November 8th. The coupon book celebration will take place on November 10th at Sarah Simpson Professional Development Center in the Great Room. The luncheon will begin at 11:00 a.m. On November 14th, Knox County Schools will invite many community partners in for Principal Four Day. Also on that night, the Green Magnet Academy rezoning meeting will take place at Green at the school, at school at 6:00 p.m. The Disparities in Education Outcomes Steering Committee Community Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 16th at 6:00 p.m. at Central High School to update the community on the status of the DEO's recommendations to the board and to allow the public the opportunity to have input. All board members are invited to attend if your schedule permits. Madam Chair, members of board, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent Thomas. I just want to clarify, the rezoning meeting is on Tuesday, the 14th, and then I guess the DEO meeting then is on the 16th, which is a Thursday, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, then we'll just move right on into the agenda, and it's 5:07, so we are getting a jump start on that. And our first item is the Great Schools Partnership: Best Schools in the South Campaign.
Great, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members and Superintendent Thomas. I'm so excited to be here tonight to share some information with you that's kind of been a long time coming. It feels like we've been working on gathering community input around best schools in the South for quite a while, so a couple of things I just wanted to give you a heads-up about before I get started into the slides. The first is just a reminder about what I'm about to present. We've been talking about creating the best schools in the South for some time, and Great Schools Partnership is really pleased to be in partnership with the school district on this. I guess the thing, the question that we get most often is, what does that mean? When you say best schools in the South, what does that mean? And there are lots of ways to define that. We can look at data, we can look at other factors, but I think that we all agree that we want to make sure that it's what's meaningful to our community that really guides us moving forward. So that's what we set out to do. We spent months and spoke with thousands and thousands of people, did surveys, and brought information back to stakeholders to check it out, make sure that it was correct. So this is my presentation in a nutshell of what we did. So I'm about to get started and tell you a little bit about how we did this. You have a lot of slides in your packet, so the other thing I want to let you know is that I'm going to move kind of quickly, and that's not to keep anything, you know, keep us from discussing anything, so at any time, if you have any questions, please feel free to just let me know. I'll stop, I'll go back, whatever you need, but just to keep things moving, I might move a little bit quicker than. And the representation across geographic areas of our community, that it would be really important for us to dive in on our listening sessions in communities that were underrepresented on the survey. So we used a lot of creative strategies to reach out in underrepresented parts of our community. So I'm going to start with the survey, which really had three questions. The first question was stated, as we strive to create the best schools in the South, how important are the following? And there were a range of options that could be dragged and dropped into boxes, and we were looking at a couple of different things, not just what people chose, but there are some analytics in the survey process that help us to understand by how long they hover over a box and what they choose first, that tells us about what's important to people, so it's, or how important those things are to people. So we were able to, by rank, identify that quality of teachers is, to our community, the most important answer to this question, as we strive to create the best schools in the South, how important are the following? So teacher-student ratio came up as number two, reading, math, safety, security, teacher satisfaction. We did a Spanish-language survey, and quality of facilities came out as a top-ranked item on that, on that survey. So here's the important thing I want you to note about this. Across all geographic districts on the survey, quality of teachers came out by, you know, just far above the others. But the other thing I want you to note that is that it doesn't matter where you live in Knoxville, we all want the same thing for our kids. So you'll see that there's very little variation. There may be, you know, a little change in how they're ranked. If you look at North Knoxville, art and music came out above teacher and staff satisfaction, but the, you know, by and large, there was a lot of similarity across the entire school district regarding the attributes that are most important to create the best schools in the South. The second question focused on outcomes. What do you think our students need to master before they leave Knox County Schools? Little bit different question. So again, we're going to see a lot of similarity, reading, critical thinking, math, self-discipline, writing, verbal skills, and then in the Spanish-language survey, math skills came out on top. You have two slides here, and forgive the highlight on East, it doesn't mean anything, it's just user error, so please forgive me for that. But what you need to see here, again, is that there is a lot of similarity. We looked at all responses, and you can see reading skills comes out as the top skill that students need to master. And then there's a little bit of change, but really across the district, we see a lot of similarity, critical thinking, self-discipline, math, writing skills. And then we broke that out by school, so you'll, I'm going to show you two slides. On the first slide, we've got high schools, so ninth through twelfth, and again, reading skills comes out on top. You see a lot of similarities, writing skills, critical thinking, math, self-discipline. And then on this slide, the all column is the one to the far left, so you'll see, again, very similar across the, across the district, maybe with the exception, you see that on the far right, which is West Knoxville, critical thinking came out on top, but reading skills are still highly important in that middle-school grade level, and lots of similarities, again, on the K through five, the parents of K through five students who are in the schools. So a lot to absorb there, but again, what you'll see, lots of similarities regardless of where, where we live. So the third question was, so how are we doing? So based on your definition of best schools in the South, how close are we? Great news, you know, ninety-six percent of respondents say that we're at least halfway there. I'm a glass half-full kind of person, and so what I saw is that there is either people are really satisfied, or they feel very optimistic about the direction that we're going. So that was good news. All right, then we went out and started listening to folks, so let's, let's talk about what, what people had to say when we went out to do listening sessions with teachers and with community members. We had employees who were going door-to-door in car lines and asking parents questions in car lines, so we found lots of creative ways to collect information. So when people say that quality of teachers is a very highly important attribute of the best schools in the South, what are some of the things that they're talking about that influence teacher quality? Competing demands, resources, and these are defined in different ways. This wasn't just about direct funding, but also about time and other types of resources. Teacher preparation and making sure that teachers are really skilled, not just with the basic, you know, teaching skills, but there are all sorts of new demands in the classroom that we heard teachers need additional preparation for, and then pay, you know, also came up. I will say that I think it's really important to note here that that wasn't the first thing that came up. It was important, but there really, I think, was a strong understanding that there are many factors that play into the environment of a school and a teacher's satisfaction and the quality of their work. So I will not read through these quotes. You have them in your packet, but again, there were lots of comments about stress, workload, burnout, and the importance of looking at factors in addition to pay that play into a teacher's experience and the quality of their work. But again, pay came up, and we had business leaders who said, listen, if you want good people, we've got, we've got to pay them and, you know, pull out the checkbook. You can see that there. So lots of, lots of comments from folks about teacher quality that we can get into more in a different setting. Non, so reading and math, what is it, if best schools in the South, if one of the outcomes that we want to achieve is highly competent reading and math, or high proficiency in reading and math, what is it that we need to consider? So there are lots of non-academic barriers that were identified across the board as we went out in listening sessions, and sort of the new demands of society and the role of schools and classrooms to deal with social, mental, physical barriers, that children learn differently and need different strategies. Parents need to be engaged. And then there were lots of comments about teacher testing versus teaching. And of course, I can't imagine why I would have been glad to hear this, but you know, for some reason, I was really glad to hear that people want every school to be a community school. There were lots of comments about community schools and the value of community schools. Again, quotes that we pulled that sort of address some of the things that I've just, that I've just talked about, that you're welcome to peruse. All right, so let's, let's, oh goodness, okay, so the presentation I have, so this is not the presentation that I have in front of me. That's okay, though. I'm going to ad lib from here. So what did we do from here? We got all of this great feedback, both from our surveys, from the listening sessions that we did. We summarized in the manner that you, that you saw, and we brought it back to the schools. That was our first step. We wanted to bring it back to school administrators and folks who are out in the fields and on the ground, to be able to kind of do a reality check, is what we heard what you're experiencing, and sort of the way that we summarized it, is it what you're experiencing? And then we also wanted to talk with, particularly with, with folks in, in schools, based on what you've heard about quality teachers, reading and math, basic skills, critical thinking, school environment, what, what's going well now, and what do we need to do more of in the, in the future? Because this is really important for Great Schools Partnership as we think about our strategies for supporting Knox County Schools. So what we heard from the school leader sessions is, first of all, that there's a lot that's going well. So folks were really excited about things such as professional development and the recruiter that's been hired. PBIS, we heard a lot of really positive things about PBIS, and that there's been a really intentional effort to listen to teachers, so we, we heard a lot from folks about how important that is. Some areas that school administrators identified for potential improvement, more planning time for teachers, stronger mentoring programs. You know, again, I think one of the things that really stood out to me, I mean, listening to our community and listening to our education professionals, is the, the need to focus on the social, emotional, and other needs of students as they relate to their ability to perform academically. So we talked also about things like basic reading and math and critical thinking, and there were many things that were identified in those realms as well. Just a few that I think folks said that they, they thought were going well, personal development for teachers, RTI, lots of positive comments about that. I'm going to kind of skim through this and move on. Meeting students' individual needs was another area that was identified, both in the survey and in our listening sessions, and so we were able to talk with school administrators about that. There was, you know, of course, some discussion about just, you know, again, meeting those holistic needs of, of children. Translators and school counselors were identified as a need. So I guess the question is, where do we go from here? And certainly, we, we stand ready to support Knox County Schools and where, where you're going. We're also making decisions internally, Great Schools Partnership, about how we're using this information to help, to help move forward. And so a lot of what we heard just sort of, I think reaffirms some of the work that we're already doing, and doubling down on community schools, making sure not only that we're ready to expand, because there is huge demand, but that we're doing that in a way that preserves the quality of the initiative. It, it can be a challenge to balance those things. We ask a lot of our partners as we expand, in addition to our own internal capacity. Parents as teachers, I think the teacher, the parent engagement piece was identified as very important. So the Parents as Teachers program that we've partnered with Knox County Schools on for now over thirteen years, it's a, it's a strongly evidence-based program, finding ways to expand that. We're, you know, we're in our third year of Leaders for Readers, which is a volunteer-based reading program that has shown some promising results, so again, focusing on that reading and also assisting classroom teachers in, in making sure that students are getting some, some extra help. You heard a little bit about Code 10 and the Guinness World Record. We support Code 10, that's our, that's our Great Schools Partnership initiative, and you know, those are hands-on workforce skills that students are gaining while they're in Knox County Schools in partnership with private, private industry. So it really to us sort of reinforced some of what we're doing, but we're also looking to that issue of teacher quality as a very important issue that we, we do, teacherpreneur, we have some, some programs and initiatives that help support teachers, but how can we be more intentional in partnering with Knox County Schools to move that forward? And so we're looking for some best practices now in, in partnership with our board to, to be able to address that very important issue that was identified by our community as the number-one attribute of the best schools in the South is having the very best teachers and the highest-quality teachers. So that's, in a nutshell, not too bad, lots of slides. I am open to questions, and of course, I have others here with me, Buzz and Bridget, who really led this effort for us for Great Schools Partnership. Okay, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, thank you, Stephanie. Just a couple of quick questions, kind of tying up into that. I don't necessarily know that I expect an answer, but it's just something to think about as you go forward. One of the things that I think would be very interesting is, what do people mean when they say quality teacher?
Right.
Again, like best school in the South. What, what are we using to define what is a high-quality teacher? Because some people may view that differently, so I think that's a, as we look to grow better teachers and recruit teachers, what do people mean by that?
Great.
The other question that I have or fact is, we place a lot of emphasis on differentiated learning. As a parent, that's what I wanted for my children. That's got to be a stressor in the classroom.
Yeah.
And so I would be interested if there are best practices, ways other people have done that, does that fall into staff, teacher, you know, student-teacher ratios? If you've got to differentiate for seventeen kids, that's a lot different than twenty-seven kids, and so how, how does that? And all this can be accomplished with money. I mean, I think I'm just being realistic, that a lot of these things are going to require additional dollars into the school system. We can't compensate better without additional dollars. We can't reduce class size without additional dollars, and so it's very easy for stakeholders to say, raise salaries, reduce class size, find the money. I hope during part of this work that you guys are doing, there's also a realistic conversation about where that money comes from, because one of the things that we live with on the Board of Education is, as you know, and I'm preaching to the choir, just make it happen. There's a finite amount of money, and so if people want this, is this really a top priority for our community, because we are not the funding body?
Got it.
And so I, I just, and then the Leaders for Readers, I'd be interested to see, you said there's some good preliminary data at some point, that would be interesting to see in the schools where that's going on. What kind of, since data's kind of hard to come by these days, what kind of difference that made?
Great. We will bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Those are great questions. Thank you.
Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Stephanie and the Great Schools team for this information. It's, I love that you took multiple approaches, being, you know, immersed in data now myself as a doc student. I really appreciate that, that it's, you took a quant and a qual approach to really gather the data. And a lot of this really reaffirmed things I think I already knew as a board member, but one of the things that jumped out to me, Stephanie, was the slide about the, the Spanish-language survey, and that those folks had prioritized math as the highest, and I was just curious if, when you all did the survey, was, was the Spanish-language survey the exact same as the English survey, just translated to Spanish?
It was.
Okay.
Yes, it was exactly the same.
Okay. I was just, that's kind of surprised me, and I was wondering, maybe we might have gotten, you might have gotten different response or feedback if there had been a question about, you know, learning, you know, ELL, like learning English, getting to that level of proficiency versus, I'm not sure how that question may have been interpretative about reading and, you know, I don't know.
Right, yeah. It's hard to say, but I will tell you that in the listening, we did some Spanish-language listening sessions as well, and again, I think that one of the things that's very striking is that parents want similar things for their students. So it was interesting to me also that facilities ranked so highly and in, you know, what are the best schools, and so there may be a literal interpretation of school building, facility, best schools or a good facility, so.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
That was my only question that really jumped out at me. Thank you guys so much.
Yeah.
Mr. McMillan, any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, and you may have answered this, and I just missed it toward the front, I guess it was maybe, it was one of the first slides, maybe the second slide that you showed. You were talking about the participants, and that there were only nine percent from the east, nine percent from the south.
Yes.
That left the, the north and west with eighty-two percent, if my math's right.
Yes, sir.
Was it, was it based on population, or, or did you have trouble getting participants in those two areas?
It really was a challenge of getting participants in those two areas. I mean, of course, our population center is, you know, is west, but it, but just honestly, it was a challenge getting participants, which is why we, when we did the listening sessions, we made sure to get out more in those areas, because it was harder to get people to respond to a survey online. That's a great question, yeah.
Ms. Teal?
Stephanie, tell me a little bit about the criteria you're looking to expand.
Right.
So how do you decide which school is next?
Okay.
You can come District Six?
Yes.
And also... And also, what do we need to do to help you?
Right.
What does this board need to do to help you keep on going?
Great, oh, I love that question. Thank you so much, ma'am. So, a couple of things about expansion of community schools right now, and I'll start with the criteria, but then I wanna talk a little bit about some of the nuances of our ability to expand. What we have done is partnered directly with the school's Accountability Office and with Student Support Services to really identify, first of all, schools that could most benefit from those additional services, looking at the overall school and how they could most benefit. So, looking at data such as academic outcomes, school attendance, behavior referrals. Then we also have to consider the readiness of the school, the school administrator, the staff and faculty, and the community. So, those really are, we're just kinda balancing those two. We have gone through an application process. For the past couple of rounds of expansion, it's been an application. So, we send out an application, realizing that limited resources, we might be able to add one or two schools, so we might be able to invite eleven schools, and by and large, most of them will apply.
Is that like a hundred-page citation?
No.
Is that like a?
No, it's really short. It's, I think, I think the longest responses, it's all sort of fill-in-the-blank, it might end up being about three pages, because then we go to do an interview, and we interview the school administrator, we interview faculty and staff, we interview community partners. And it's really kind of a judgment call in partnership with our partners in Knox County schools and being able to figure that out. Our next round of expansion, we're really gonna be thinking about the capacity of our partners. So, we have some really key partners that work across the community school sites, Helen Ross McNabb, our after-care partners, we have a dental initiative that we partner with through Elgin Foundation, and about two-hundred-and-fifty other partners, but there are some really key ones that at this point are stretched and feeling a little bit limited in their ability to expand. So, we've gotta think outside the box about either keeping them engaged, finding other partners who might be able to come to the table, and possibly looking at how the model might be a little bit different as we continue to expand, because we may not be able to provide everything to every school, and not every school may need everything. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, I don't, we don't need to lobby you?
We're always open for suggestions. Yes.
We have one more, and about six minutes to finish up. Ms. Pepperidge?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just looking over what we've learned, and so, when you say what we've learned, is that from the subgroups, which mean from parents to teachers to students? Because you say, here it says, "teachers-student ratio" and "teacher-staff satisfaction" in school environment, but that, when you talk about making sure all kids learn, all kids understand, and we understand our kids.
Right.
Then you say, although important disparities was ranked low as far as focus group discussions. How's that?
Some of those slides didn't show up, didn't they? I've got, I have them, though. I know the slide you're talking about. I'm not sure why it didn't show up when I was going through. So, yes, I am on the slide that you're talking about, which is entitled "What We Learned." Yes, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So, we have, that there were some priority issues that were consistent, so, among teachers, teacher-student ratio, teacher-staff satisfaction was very high priority. I think it's got here that middle schools somewhere are the least excited about, yes, yes, surprising. So, again, even though disparities were not...
I guess it depends on what type of disparities.
Right. I think there's a lot that could be said about that. Do people understand what that meant?
Right.
You know, and so, the other thing that I will tell you is that nearly everyone ranked everything as highly important. So, that, it's hard, like, right? Because we think all these things are important. So, just because this one may have ranked below this, it was still way up there as far as the scale of importance to people in our community. So, we could pull that out if you're interested and kinda, we were able...
I know there's different types of disparities.
Right.
So, I don't know if they meant it's low priority, but it could have been, according to that focus group, I don't know if it's the teachers' focus group, students', or parents', which focus group, and was it all-inclusive and still?
So, it was on the survey that it showed up as far as rank order as a, quote, "lower priority." It was still a high priority, but it was a lower-high priority than the others. And in the focus groups, it did come up as an issue of importance as people were verbalizing their concerns, and that was really pretty much across the board. I wasn't able to attend all of the focus groups, but many of them talked about the importance of making sure that all of our children have the same opportunities, and so, does that help?
That was just interesting, because I know we're getting a lot of information, a lot of questions, and a lot of concerns about it, and so, I just wanted to make sure that I understood exactly the question and how that fell out or how that came out within focus groups.
It was the word disparities to drag and drop into a box. So, it may have not resonated with some people, you know, or even understood, but it did come up in our focus groups as an important issue.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just was wondering how involved students were in determining what was important to them, and if you reached out to any students to ask, you know, what are their top things that they would like in a great school?
That's a really good question. We did a special focus group for students to ask sort of what was important to them. I would have to, I'm really digging in my memory right now to remember some of the themes that came out from that, but we probably have notes specifically from that focus group. We did a special focus group for students.
How many were involved in it?
Hmm, there were about, maybe twenty-five students in that group. I would say about twenty or twenty-five, so it wasn't huge. Yeah, that's a good question, and we just did one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for asking that question.
Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, Stephanie?
Yes.
Thank you for doing this presentation. I like you a lot better than Buzz.
That's my boss there.
Yeah.
Mr. Norman.
You did a good, you did a good job.
Thank you, sir.
You've sort of obliquely referred to this a couple of times. School, I have a question about school discipline. Did you attempt in, or do you have questions where you got feedback from the community about school discipline?
I would say yes. In the focus groups, I specifically recall receiving feedback from different focus groups about community members' understanding of some of the challenges that educators face in the classroom around discipline, and comments such as, "We wanna make sure that teachers have the tools to appropriately address discipline, because it is a distraction to the learning environment." I don't know if those were the exact words, but that was sort of my takeaway, and it wasn't only from teachers, it was from parents who understood the impact on their child's learning. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, in a sense, and we're just, we've spent a lot of time on discipline and discipline policies, and there's a lot of pressure now from various places, sometimes related to the disparities thing, but certainly, it's an important topic. It's one that I'd like to hear more about in terms of how the community feels, and what are their observations about how we're doing from a discipline standpoint.
We can pull that for you. There were comments about that, so we will pull that, and I have several things that I've taken notes on that folks have asked questions about.
Ms. Thorin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In reading some of the comments, some of them referred to CTE-type, basically, college and career readiness. Can you just talk about what you heard about in the focus groups along those lines? And I know one of the comments talked about, was from a college professor, students not being ready, understanding what a college classroom experience would be like. Could you just speak to those couple of things?
Yeah, so, a couple of different, as I, so I think there may be a couple of different things with that. The first is that we did hear a lot from, both from parents and from teachers about, and from the business community, about the need to have multiple pathways for success. And in a couple of the groups, and I think this was parents, if I remember, I remember hearing, you know, it's, "College is not the only way, and so, we need to make sure that students are able to be successful in more of a technical, you know, track." So, I think that that did come out, and it came out pretty highly, actually. It's on there somewhere. So, those hands-on skills and the ability to enter the workforce from different pathways. I think the second part was, we actually did a focus group with college professors. I think it was at Pelosi P., was it Pelosi P.? And we did hear a lot from sort of the general education, first-year faculty, that they had some concerns about students' ability to perform in a college classroom, and that they just didn't have the basic skills around reading in particular, and English language skills that they would have to have in order to be successful. So, does that answer, okay.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thanks.
I think there's been some great questions from the board, and hopefully, y'all will keep us updated as you move forward, and thanks to everybody back there from Great Schools for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Do I need to close this, Terry, or? No, I got it, no.
Okay.
I got it.
And next, we'll be Karen Pershing to speak to the Primary Substance Abuse Prevention Report.
Thank you, Karen, for coming. I think this is a great follow-up to all those viewings of Chasing the Dragon.
Well, thank you for the invitation to come here and talk to you all. I'm primarily gonna focus on the prescription drug epidemic, because that's primarily what we're hearing a lot of, but as we go through these slides, and I'll move rather quickly as well to allow plenty of time for discussion, I think we need to keep in mind, based on our Youth Risk Behavior Survey, there are three primary substances of abuse with our young people, and none of those three are pills. Why, we don't wanna ignore the pill problem. At the same time, we need to focus on alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana if we really wanna make a difference in our young people. So, I call, a lot of my presentations I do drowning in a sea of pills, because when I first started looking at data around this issue in 2010, I had paralysis from analysis, is what I call it. Every data trend I looked at was a steep upward curve, and being public health-trained, I was frightened by what I saw, because there weren't a lot of epidemiological curves I'd seen in my career that had this kind of slope in progression upwards. So, I described it as a tsunami, and it's like, is anybody paying attention to this? And so, it's interesting, now I'm in my seventh year at MDC, and all of a sudden, people are paying attention to it. So, I'm thankful for that, and I know that we're gonna have a lot of positive impact the more people get engaged and get involved around this issue. So, Metro Drug Coalition, hopefully, most of you know who we are. We're a nonprofit that's been around since 1986. We are the Primary Substance Abuse Prevention Organization here in Knoxville, and we really do our work a lot through coalitions and bringing diverse stakeholders together to assess our community's needs around substance use issues, and to all move in the same direction and create common solutions. So, we consider ourselves a community hub. These maps just really, they're really busy, and I just don't want you to drown in trying to sort them out. The top one really shows prescribing in the nation, and the darker the color, the more prescriptions are being prescribed, so you can see where Tennessee is there. The bottom graph, I really want you to pay attention, more attention to, because the lighter the color, the more improvement you're seeing. So, our state in the top maybe look really bleak and dark, but when you look at the bottom, we're making a lot of progress in Tennessee, even though it's not quick enough for any of us. Drug overdose deaths, this is extremely concerning, because even though we're making progress in some areas, we're continuing to see overdose deaths climb. And as you can see, 2016 numbers, you can see that upward curve. And we're not seeing, at least in Knox County, we're not seeing those numbers decrease in 2017. We're projected right now to be up from 2016. This is a great one to, because a lot of people didn't really realize, I think we hear a lot from families who lose a young person to an overdose death, but if you look at the age distribution, who we're losing to this epidemic are parents and grandparents, and that's what we all need to understand, is that we have this whole new orphan category of kids that we're seeing that are being orphaned by this epidemic. So, it's really having a negative impact on children in these families who are losing parents and grandparents. Total MMEs dispensed, let me kinda explain real quickly what an MME is. It's a milligram morphine equivalent. Not all painkillers are created equal. So, this is a way in our database to really equalize prescriptions, because if you just measure prescriptions, then someone who gets thirty pills is being measured the same as someone that gets five pills prescribed to them. And one may be an eighty-milligram, one may be a ten-milligram. So, this really equalizes all prescriptions in the database, so that we're measuring apples to apples. So, you will see prescriptions written in some data that you see, and others MME. I really land on MMEs to really be able to track and identify where we are as a state. So, you can see that there's been some decreases in prescribing in our state, and there's been a lot of effort around educating those prescribers and getting them to be a little more cautious about when they prescribe and for what conditions. In 2016, the numbers that we got, they actually started teasing those numbers out a little bit, because you can see in the data that I put in there below, we actually saw an increase in MMEs, but the reason that being was that our medication that we used to treat in opioid use disorder are also controlled substances. So, what the state is now doing is splitting that out, so that we can see the difference in prescribing for pain, strictly for pain, and then prescribing for a substance use disorder. So, you can see, we saw an eight-point-eight decrease overall in prescribing for pain in our state, but you can see Knox County actually had a nineteen, almost twenty percent decrease. So, even though Knox County had a really tough battle and has had around this epidemic, we are actually making a huge amount of progress in this particular area. And you can see our prescribing numbers for substance use disorders are up, have increased about fifty-nine percent. Again, that's good, because that means people are getting help for their addiction and getting treatment. So, some of the other adverse outcomes we're looking at, of course, y'all are, I'm sure, very interested in neonatal abstinence syndrome. Approximately a thousand babies are born every year in the state diagnosed with neonatal abstinence syndrome. In Knox County, between 2015 and 2016, we actually saw a decrease of eighteen percent. In the East Tennessee region, we saw a decrease of twelve percent. So, again, we're making some progress, but I don't know, if you all are like me, I'd like to see that zero. This is a hundred percent preventable condition. If babies are not exposed to drugs in utero, they're not gonna have to withdraw. More treatment admissions for opioid addiction than alcohol now. The hot area, of course, East Tennessee. And then, one thing I like to point out, people always say this wrong, babies are not addicts, and I just have to make sure everyone's educated. and I just have to make sure everyone's educated on that. Babies are born dependent on medications that their mothers took. And addiction is something where you're doing it in spite of negative consequences and intentional behavior. So, babies are not intentionally taking drugs, so that they have to withdraw. So, they're born physically dependent. Some of the, I think I skipped, okay. Some of the long-term effects of prenatal drug exposure, there's a lot we don't know about opioid exposure yet. But there's a lot we do know about alcohol, which is still being abused, marijuana. Tobacco is the number-one cause of premature birth. And what we're seeing a lot of now is really polysubstance use. So, it's, it's rare that a baby is born just solely exposed to one substance. So, when we're looking at putting kids in a box and saying, oh, well, they were a drug baby, or whatever, you know, term we want to use, which isn't necessarily a positive term, it's really hard to differentiate what may have caused some of the more severe problems in a baby. So, again, I think we just need to keep this all in perspective as we move forward. Some of the suspected long-term effects of opioid exposure, hyperactivity and shorter attention spans, memory and perception problems, some sensory problems, difficulty transitioning from task to task. Bottom line, again, any drug exposure has negative consequences on children. NAS is less common than exposure to nicotine and alcohol. Fetal alcohol spectrum disorder is the most severe, based on what we know now. And then, environment plays a huge role in this. So, again, it's that nature versus nurture argument that we've had since I was in undergrad school, my undergrad's Child and Family Studies, and we talked about that a lot through my coursework. So, again, I think the long-term outcomes for kids, a lot of it's going to be dependent on the environment in the classroom, as well as the home environment. So, how children are developed, of course, you guys, a lot of you know this, influenced by constitutional, as well as genetic predispositions, and those environmental stimuli. Children vary in their, in their response to any one environmental insult. Again, if they've got, you know, something going on in their environment that's negative, some kids handle those situations better than others. But multiple ones, we know, multiple stressors in a child's life are predictable of poor outcomes. And then, experiences influencing development can either be obvious or very subtle. And then, enormous plasticity in development with children, as you all know. Bonding during infancy is most significant in developmental tasks. So, again, that child is extremely important. We had a fetal assault law, where we were taking babies away from moms at birth, and that bonding wasn't occurring, that skin-to-skin initial contact. And so, you know, whether we want to be angry at the mom or not, we don't want to penalize the baby even more by not allowing that bonding time. Research limitations, again, there's limitations on polysubstance use, and trying to tease all that out in terms of long-term outcomes. So, keep in mind, symptoms and severity are going to vary widely. Important, it's very important not to generalize or stereotype these children. Many drug-exposed children are placed in state custody, or raised by family members. There is a huge number of grandparents raising their grandchildren these days. And that's problematic in itself. Many of them are on fixed incomes, and are tired. I mean, there's a reason you have children when you're young. I have a seven-year-old grandson, and he, I have to have a nap when he goes home. So, again, I wanted to talk a little bit about ACEs, because a lot of these children, even though they may have been exposed to drugs, adverse childhood experiences, what we're learning about now through research, can really play a huge role in a child's development, and the likelihood that they may have health or education problems later on. The effects of ACEs are really cumulative. All of us have stress in our lives, you know, nobody has a stress-free life. But if children are exposed to toxic stress on an ongoing basis, it actually changes the brain chemistry in that child. So, this is what we need to really be paying attention to in our educational system, is being able to identify children who may be in abnormally toxic stress situations. And what can we do as an educational system to help that child manage that stress? And a lot of it goes back, you know, I can remember Knoxville's promise, I wish it was still here. But, you know, every child needs that caring adult. And for some kids, it's going to be that teacher in the school, could be the janitor. They sometimes choose who they bond with, by who reaches out to them. So, any way we can reduce the ACEs is important. So, an ACE, of course, ACE is basically a ten, ten-question survey that's done, and you get one point for each, each question. So, an ACE score four or higher, you're seven times more likely to be an alcoholic. Six times more likely to have sex by age fifteen. Two times more likely, and it goes on and on. When you get up to six or higher, suicide's a huge issue right now. We're all dealing with that. We saw the, hopefully y'all saw the latest Youth Risk Behavior Survey. The suicidal tendency numbers and the thoughts of suicide are really climbing among our youth. And so, we really need to pay attention to this, and figure out, you know, what it is that's putting these kids at risk for wanting to take their own lives. So, they're thirty times more likely to attempt suicide. So, again, if we understand the stressors in the ACEs these kids may have experienced, it might better inform us when we're trying to intervene. And then, twenty, it can actually take twenty years off someone's lifespan. So, it has a huge impact on health. So, you can see the theoretical influence of ACEs, again, starting with birth and working their way up, just the things, educational problems, developmental problems that can occur when kids are living in these toxic stress situations. And then, graduation rates. Y'all are very interested, we're all interested in improving graduation rates of all students. We want every child to succeed, and I know y'all do too. So, again, a high ACE score can have an impact on whether or not that child finishes high school and goes on to college. How can schools assist? Really having a predictable, secure, and stable environment, a lot of structure, and that's good for all kids. Clear expectations and boundaries, nurturing and support, helping children cope with stress. Again, there's positive ways you can emulate and, and help them work through stressful situations. I think it's important that all staff be trained on ACEs, and identify when an ACE might be happening with a child, and being there to help that child work through that adverse childhood experience, whether it's that child just lost a parent or a grandparent to a drug overdose. Helping that child work through that loss can have a huge impact. And then, staff training on substance use disorders. We all need to understand this, because it's very easy to point the fingers and, at people with these problems, and say they're horrible people, horrible parents. But if you really educate yourself and understand how the disease occurs and how it progresses, I think we can all have a little bit better understanding, because more than likely, our teachers are dealing with parents who are in active addiction right now. And I'm sure they're struggling with how to best work with them. Classroom strategies, kind of ties with the Great Schools Partnership. Survey information, adult-child interaction, and having that ratio to the point where, you know, you can build those relationships in the classroom. Predictable environments. Again, respect for the child, and the unique child that that, a unique role that child And again, overall development, and paying attention to that, when a child starts, you know, struggling in a certain area, getting that intervention in there as soon as possible. And there's my contact information. Any questions? That was kind of quick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for coming and sharing this information. The only thing I wanted to just chime in and add is with regard to some of those slides at the end about ACEs, and that's sort of an evolving part of education, and really, there are some new conferences that have been happening about that. But I, the only thing I was going to add is that there has been some research that really shows that ACEs directly impact literacy. That's one of the highest places that they've found an impact, particularly in emergent literacy. And so, I think that, you know, as we see those numbers grow and change, and what is kind of scary to see is, you know, we don't know what the impact is for a lot of these, you know, children that are born NAS, because, you know, we don't know what, how the drug's going to affect them in the long term. But I think it just speaks to our need to continually strengthen our literacy programs, even before our kids hit the door in kindergarten. So, as everybody knows, I'm a huge proponent of early childhood ed, and I went, my, my undergrad program was through Child and Family Studies as well. So, thank you, Karen.
Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Karen, for the work that this is, that the MDC is doing, and especially for this outreach to the community. I, I attended the session at Bearden High School, and I attended it for many selfish reasons, because I have grandchildren to middle-school age, and trying to assess whether I thought, you know, this was appropriate for them. And it just came away with really a good perspective of what the issues are, and, and I appreciated that the panel so much of it, even though it was mostly adults asking the questions, that many of the answers spoke to our kids, spoke to our, our students. And I'm sure you know this, and I, I want to announce it publicly, that even though it's not one of the four showings that was sponsored system-wide, that Hardin Valley High is also doing this same program in an effort to try to, to reach more, more of our population. That's November ninth, from six to eight. So, if, if you've missed it, anyone, and, and would still like the opportunity to see it, it will be at HVA. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was going to mention, too, that that's actually, you can watch it at any time on YouTube, Chasing the Dragon. So, if you've not seen it, and you don't have an opportunity to go to Hardin Valley, I highly suggest you watch it at home. It is a very powerful documentary.
Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I may be a little slow, but what's ACEs and SUDs? What does that acronym?
Oh, sorry. ACEs is Adverse Childhood Experiences, and SUDs are Substance Use Disorders.
Okay. When you say that, because I have heard kids are drug-addicted children, that's why they're on medication, and that's why they act the way they act. And you said that they're physically dependent, but they're not addicts. So, when, so are addicts not physically dependent? I guess I'm trying to figure out exactly what that means, because most of the time, do the kids have withdrawal? Do they have to go on some type of medication as children, or they?
Yeah. Physical dependence is when your body gets used to a drug, and when you take that drug away, your body goes into physical withdrawal. When someone, so someone with a substance use disorder is going to have the physical withdrawal, but they've also crossed the line to where it's a psychological dependency as well. So, not only are they having to withdraw physically from that drug, but they also have to learn what brain triggers that they have, what, what stimuli, and what parts of the brain are being affected by this, and what they can do behavior-wise to change, and to do something else, and to reduce the triggers that are pushing them to use drugs, even though they know that it's going to cause them harm down the road. So, it's using, addiction is using a drug even though you know it's harmful, and that there's negative consequences involved. So, that's the difference in children who are exposed in utero, is they did not use intentionally, number one, and number two, they're not continuing to use a drug despite negative consequences. So, their bodies physically withdraw, but they don't have the psychological dependence and addiction that an adult has.
They will come into the world, and they have this physical dependence, they have to go through the withdrawal. And so, that's when you see them having to take some type of treatment?
Well, they're usually treated in the hospital, using small amounts of morphine, where they wean them gradually off that morphine. And they're able to reduce the time in the hospital. When I first started following the NICU, and what they were doing with the weaning, the average was twenty-eight days for a wean. Now, they're down to fourteen, fifteen days. So, over time, they're, they're learning that they can taper them a little bit more quickly, because you don't want to expose the baby any longer than you have to, to those powerful medications.
Okay. So, when you said it, if, it has some kind of effect on our graduation in college, but is that from them being babies with, that's dependent, or is that just?
No, the adverse childhood experiences was what that graph was about. And that's basically, you know, if a child is sexually abused, if they're neglected, if they have a parent die, those types of situations can actually cause adverse childhood experiences. A cumulative effect of those experiences is what can cause the decrease in graduation rates.
Okay. Just one more question.
Sure.
I know we said that it's going down as far as prescriptions or whatever, but I also know that we're getting larger amounts of drugs. I, I went to get my tooth pulled, and I get thirty days of, what is it, cocaine, or whatever you want to call it?
I hope you're not getting cocaine.
Oxycodone.
Oxycodone.
I say, who's our dentist?
Oxycodone, whatever. Well, I don't need thirty days. Excuse me, I know a lot of drugs.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm in no way, I'm in no way saying that we have arrived when it comes to prescribing, because we are still hearing a lot of that. You know, I had a tooth pulled, and they gave me thirty days' worth, which is ridiculous. Do you even need any after getting a tooth pulled? Or will acetaminophen, acetaminophen, ibuprofen do, and, and some ice pack on the area of your, your jaw where you had that tooth removed, wouldn't do the same thing? Because usually, after twenty-four hours, you know, the, the major part of the pain has subsided for, you know, minor dental procedures. So, again, I think we've got a whole cultural shift that has to happen in the medical profession, as well as us as consumers. We have bought into this idea that we should never have pain, we should never be sad. Well, those are all part of life. I mean, you're never going to have a pain-free life. But we've created this, this way of thinking, and we're demanding that we not feel pain or not feel sad. So, again, we have to accept our responsibility in creating part of the problem of where we are today as well.
Okay. And then, I heard we're going to start soon the pharmaceutical companies, if they don't start adhering to trying to help us get?
Yeah. They're not, not coming forward with a lot of money on their own, that's for sure.
Ms. Diggit, thank you. I just have one quick question. Karen, when we talked about percentages, that's all well and good. Can you give me an idea of numbers of children? I mean, that may be, you know, roughly, how many children in Knox County are born each year with this sort of syndrome? I'm thinking about that in terms of, because eventually, they'll come into the school system. So, just the magnitude of it, is it five thousand children a year, a thousand children a year? You may not be able to tell me.
It's a thou, just a little over a thousand statewide. Knox County has about a hundred of those. So, again, I think it's gotten a lot of people's attention, NAS has. But I tell everyone to kind of keep it in perspective. But I tell everyone to kind of keep it in perspective, that we're not going to be overrun with just like,
Well, I'm glad to hear you, I'm glad to hear you say that because one of the things I hear a lot in the community is special ed rates are going to go up. This is why we have an increase in all these sorts of things and what's it going to do to impact schools. So I do think there's a, yes, it's an issue. We don't know long-term effects, but there's beginning to be some real panic out there in terms of the magnitude of this. And I just wondered if you could help?
And I've done some in services in a couple of the elementary schools. And what I've told them is you've been dealing with children exposed to substances in utero for generations. And this is not a new problem. The substance may have changed over the years, but this isn't new and you all have been managing them beautifully. So you know how to do this, so don't freak out, don't panic. And you've got to, just like you do now, you look at each child individually, you look at what their environment is at home and you work with that parent, that family, that caregiver. And you create the best opportunities for that child in the classroom to be successful. And it's not going to be any different for these kids. And so I think it's important though that we don't label them because I think there's a lot of kids you're not even going to know, may have been prenatally exposed. If they're living in a really nurturing, supportive home environment, you may not have a clue. And so they're going to, they're going to thrive. ACES is really what I'd like the school to focus more on.
I was about to say, I'm wondering if that's actually the bigger trigger to increase the issues that we have in schools so that people need to quit thinking so much about the substance abuse, but the ACE triggers and, and we'll, I'll stop there.
Because you could take a kid who wasn't exposed in utero at all, but is exposed to toxic stress and a lot of ACES and that child's going to do worse than your ba- than your child who may have been drug exposed at birth. So again, we can't put everybody in a box. And I think the future of prevention and breaking the cycle of substance use disorders is ACES. And I truly believe that we have got to, as a society, start paying attention to this. And the best thing we can do as an adult is take our own ACE score. Because personally, you know, when I did my own ACES and, and figured out what I was, I started thinking, okay, what helped me work through those things? So I think awareness as an adult and what helped us get through certain situations in childhood we may have experienced is going to help translate to how we interact with kids and how we help them.
Ms. Horn? Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think that, we've talked a lot about relationships, teachers having relationships with students and I think that that's why that's so important, is that point that you just made. Can you go back to the beginning when you talked about the, and in thinking about keeping this in perspective, the fact that alcohol, tobacco and marijuana use is a lot bigger issue for our students than opiate use? Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Sure, sure. When you look at our surveys and this has been consistent really since 2005 when we started the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. You know, the drugs of choice for our middle and high school students are alcohol's number one, tobacco and now marijuana. And so what we know from, you know, prevention research is the longer you can delay initiation of, to any substance, and again, whether it's legal or illegal, it still is affecting a not fully mature brain. Adolescent brains are not mature until they're mid-20s. And so any times you, anytime you introduce a substance to that developing brain, you're slowing down that brain maturation process. That's why you may see a 30-year-old who has smoked marijuana since they were 14 and they still act like a 14-year-old because it totally messes up their brain maturation process. So again, we know that they're four to six times more likely to develop a substance use disorder as an adult if they start using substances before age 15. So it's a benefit to all of us to make sure that the message is very, very clear that no use of any substance, whether legal or illegal, is acceptable until you're of age. And even then, we hope they don't do it because tobacco's 18, brain's not mature at 18 either.
Ms. Roundtree will finish up with you.
Okay, I'll be really quick. I just want to add, Ms. Massey told me that we do have two certified trainers in, in ACES here, so I think that's excellent. And then I didn't know if you knew, Karen, if there's been any, if you know of any research on kids that are born NAS and then the amount of ACES they've experienced? Is there a pretty high correlation there? Do you know? If there's any research out yet?
Unfortunately, there's not a lot of research yet on NAS and especially NAS and ACES. Again, I think some of the NAS babies may experience more environmental challenges with parents who may still be in active addiction.
Sure.
Or again, lost a parent, which would cause an ACE for that child. So again, I think there may be some correlation there as we go forward and some studies done, but there's not a, much of, yeah, still yet to tell.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barshing for coming and for your report. And hopefully we'll continue to work with you and the Drug Coalition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Massey, are you the one to do the next presentation?
All right. Also, if I may, just FYI, you can Google ACES and take that yourself. I mean, it's a, just a 10-question and get your score, so.
I was just going to share as an aside, we have had all of our school counselors, school psychologists and social workers trained by an outside agency. Keith Bailey came into the training in the spring and then they've also gone through the training from our two certified trainers, just for your information. Several schools on the district-wide learning days, we've offered sessions. So several teachers have attended and will continue to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, my name is Steve Rutter. I work with the Research and Evaluation Team here in Knox County. And so Ms. Massey asked me to pull together some data regarding the disparities in education outcome, specifically around conduct. And so what I wanted to do is start out to talk about, start talking about student demographics just to provide a little bit of context. And so the three bars on the right-hand side of this graph show the ethnic composition of Knox County schools for the last three school years. So you can see there hasn't been a lot of change, but the one thing that has been consistently changing year over year is that little gray wedge. And so that's the proportion of our students that are Hispanic. So what that means is the fact that that wedge is getting larger means that that group of students is growing faster than the other ethnic subgroups at Knox County schools. So this, this chart has the disciplinary incidents that resulted in suspension. So we're counting in fractions here. And so what you can see on this one, at each school level last year, we decreased the number of suspensions and overall, I think we decreased the number of suspensions at about 3,500. And you can see a line share that decrease came in the middle school grade bands. So if we dig a little deeper, you can also tell by this slide, again, we're, we're counting in fractions that resulted in a suspension. So the two bars on the left-hand side are in-school suspension. The two on the right-hand are, are out-of-school suspensions for the district. So you can see a, a large majority of the decrease that we saw last year compared to the prior year was inside the use of in-school suspension as a disciplinary action. So drilling down even farther into our different subgroups, what you can see here is we had decreases in almost, well, most of our subgroups with the exception of our Hispanic students and ELL students. And there's a, there should be a lot of overlap between those two groups. And just so you know, the, the increase in the in-school suspension usage inside the Hispanic subgroup, it did outpace the growth of the population just a little bit. So the disparity kind of increased just a, just a little bit there. So on our out-of-school suspensions, that looks very similar. Again, we had a slight increase in our, our use of out-of-school suspension with our Hispanic students and with our ELL students. And so overall though, we decreased our use of out-of-school suspension across most of our subgroups. So what that really means for the disparities is that since those decreases were present across almost all the subgroups, those disparities that we saw in February of last year with our, especially with our black students, students with disabilities and ED student, economically disadvantaged students, still are there. And so we did, Missy's going to talk a little bit about this, but we did look at some preliminary data for this school year also. And we have seen that trend in decreased use of suspension continue into this year so far.
So for my section, I'm just going to kind of highlight some of the big items from the DEO recommendation. So as all of you know, we've had the ombudsman and then we have the special ed parent facilitator slash ombudsman who've been working together and they've served a number of families and staff members and I feel like our results, our feedback from that are very, very positive. Cultural competency, we're in the process of reviewing the most recent vendors and we anticipate that we will have a contract on the December board agenda for your approval. We will begin, assuming that it is approved and we will begin training. We have everything set up to begin training in January for our tiered schools. We've taken a look at a number of variables where disparities exist and we've, we've done a tiered approach to looking at what schools we're going to offer training to first. And we've, we've already filled up all of our slots, so schools are very eager for that training and I think that's really exciting. We didn't, they, they, I mean, as soon as we sent it out, they were signing up. The MOU, we anticipate that that will be before you, either in December or January. We're very near the end of the process. We've, in the process of scheduling a meeting for one more community feedback review and then we will be, that will be before you in either December or January. We met last week with a number of youth. We had, we've Project U, we had a middle school training day and we had a high school training day. Several of you probably have seen a lot of things on Twitter about what's happening with Project U, which is where we've selected leadership teams from every single middle and high school. We've done some leadership training and my team is working with them to really do things to promote positive culture in school. If you've seen Make Someone Smile Day, Mix It Up Day, there's a lot of really neat things happening in schools as a result of that. From that group, we've asked each team of to nominate somebody, or at least two or three somebodies to create our Student Advisory Council, which again is one of the recommendations of the DEO. We're actually meeting with that group this week, Wednesday, for our second training session with them. After school will be, there's, all of the high schools are represented. Where, if we haven't contacted you, we ha- we have, yes, all right. So we want you to be a part of that. And we'll have those students doing some district-wide things in the schools, but we'll also have them rotating in and on, you know, on the DEO regular meetings and providing that student voice for that group. As you all know, the discipline policies are going to be before you in February. We're in the process of running some more student feedback sessions. We have, we're also in the process of running teacher feedback sessions. We've asked every school to select, to allow their schools to select two teachers to come and we're doing some after-school sessions. We had the first one last week and there's some scheduled the next couple of weeks. So if anybody's interested, I can give you those dates and you're welcome to attend. Restorative Interventionist, I did have principals coming, but those playoff games for football. So that sort of trumped me tonight. But we are seeing a lot of good work with our restorative interventionists and I had some people to tell you some success stories, maybe next time. But we've, we've seen some good things there. And very importantly, Mr. Thomas referenced that we have the public forum and we're getting the advertisement out about that. That will be the opportunity to hear, for us to share some of these results with the community, to give the community an opportunity to give us some feedback on what they've seen as positives as well as what they've seen as things we still need to continue to work on. Just as an update, I know I'd shared this with you all at the workshop, but I wanted publicly for people to be able to see where we are on PBIS training. We anticipate that we will have all of our schools trained in PBIS by the end of this upcoming summer. Restorative practice training, you can see where we are. And I will tell you that schools are in different phases of implementation and I think you all know that as well as, as we do. But we're, you know, we're providing support for principals and for staffs just based on where they are in their implementation. Back to the restorative interventionists and then just looking at places where schools are implementing school-wide positive behavior supports and that, and the restorative practices. So we just highlighted a few schools that, looking at the data up to this point, Southdale Middle, Northwest, Fulton and West have reduced, have recorded fewer suspensions in this school year than at that, that same point in previous school years. West High has 400 fewer discipline referrals in this school year versus last school year. And Ms. Jesse's doing a lot of restorative practice and a lot of PBIS district-wide they've really embraced. Both Central and Fulton have recorded over 200 fewer discipline referrals in that, since the same point in 1617. And again, both schools who, you know, Rob was, Mr. Spies was an early adopter. He did some training on his own, has almost, I would say probably two-thirds of his staff are trained in restorative practices and he has another training coming in. And then one of the other things that we thought we would highlight, although we don't make the decisions about arrests at school, but there have been 10 fewer arrests in schools from this year, up to this point this year than there were up to this point last year. And just for your information, we had shared the total arrest at the end of, in the February for the first semester and then here's the data for the entire school year. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to recognize Jeffrey Wright, stand up Jeffrey, who has done an amazing job. This man worked every day this summer training. I mean, basic, I had to force him to take a little vacation. He has worked, I mean, so hard to make sure every school is trained. So I just want to take a second to acknowledge that. Questions?
Ms. Deathbridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Missy and Jeffrey. I guess my question is, and this, this is just hearsay. They're not really, this one's not really down. It's just that principals are afraid to suspend kids in school or out of school because they need to keep the numbers down. So clear that up for me, please.
So I will tell you that Mr. addressed that very issue at a principal's meeting and said, set the expectation that certainly we need to do the, operate from the standpoint of implementing the strategies as our teachers are ready, but that when students had behaviors that would require a suspension from school, certainly he would expect that that to, that would occur. So I don't feel like, and again, I don't have principals here, but I think if I had them here, they would tell you that, and, and we are suspending. I would like to, you know, I would, I don't have, you know, I can get you those updated numbers, but you will see that evidence says when students are having behaviors that by our district policy says they are suspended, that is occurring. I think one of the things to highlight is we're doing a lot of proactive things to try to prevent behaviors from happening and those are, I feel like, the reasons that we're reducing. Not because we're afraid to suspend because, but we're doing some things proactively. We're increasing the tool belts of our teachers and our administrators to have some other things in place.
So how effective are the nurse, social services or whoever?
Restorative Interventionist.
Restorative, okay.
So we've hired restorative interventionists for all of our middle and high schools. And again, because people are in different phases about the implementation, some of those are, some of those places look a lot like what an old ISS classroom would look like, except that we have a therapeutic component there. Others are pretty advanced in the, and savvy in what of, some of the things that they're doing with kids versus, you know, versus just coming in for that moment, having a consequence, but all really building that relationship with a student, doing follow-up with students, making, you know, contracting with kids and just trying to create that belief that, you know, that they can control and manage and change their behavior.
Okay, because some schools are saying the ISS teacher they had is doing better because of that relationship they had built and what we put in the school system have you? That's a concern. So because they don't have that relationship and so therefore they don't have that structure nor do they have that discipline under control that they had at the end of last year. So we need, we could talk about that later.
I think I know about your situation and we're working on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, are there any other questions from Mr. Rutter or Ms. Massey?
Okay, are there any other questions from Mr. Rutter or Ms. Massey? Ms. Hale?
Not a question, but just a comment, Ms. Deathbridge, related to some of your questions. It's going to take a full cycle, which probably is going to be three or four years, before our restorative intervention folks overcome that they're not the ISS people anymore. I mean, you know, when kids have, have had that middle and high school, just some, I think they think in many ways it's just a different name for the same thing.
That's true, but three or four years, that's a whole class gone from freshman to senior and they're out the door, so we can't take.
We're, we're working really, really hard and providing support. Like, you know, it's just like anything that you do that's new. We have some people that hit the ground running and then we've had some people that needed some additional supports.
Okay, I think that's it, Ms. Massey.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Clint Sattler is going to do the presentation for the findings regarding principal preparation through the University of Tennessee Leadership Academy.
Good evening, my name is Clint Sattler. I'm the supervisor of research and evaluation with Knox County Schools. I'm the primary investigator on a study we called a district perspective regarding principal preparation through the University of Tennessee Leadership Academy. The UT Leadership Academy was launched in 2010 with the goal of creating a reliable and predictable pipeline for principal development in Knox County schools. So I want to be clear, when we look at this, the way the whole system is set up, we cannot create any kind of causal links between Leadership Academy and any kind of outcomes. This is a process where people are applying. We have a selective process where we look at the fit of people in the program, so by doing stuff like this, we don't have a peer control group to which we can compare these outcomes. The whole study hinged upon a series of research questions that were developed between the Knox County Leadership Team and the Curriculum and Instruction Department, and we did have input to make sure with the Leadership Academy personnel that we didn't have any gaping holes in scope when we were looking at this. But I do want to stress that this is the district's perspective looking at the Leadership Academy. So the first thing we want to look at is the context in which the Leadership Academy was originally launched. Do we still have a need for such a program? So when we look since school year 1112, we've averaged about 10.7 principal openings per year. This provides some evidence that we do need some kind of preparation, or we would, we may benefit from some kind of preparation program for these new principals. We also looked at market demand. So these are the people that are, the staff members in Knox County that are applying to this position, do they see value in it? Overwhelmingly, we see far more applicants to the system than we have spaces to fill. This also helps the program be selective in who's, who's enrolled in the program. Our enrollment is typically moved somewhere between eight and 15% of those that applied are actually enrolled in the program. So then we move into looking at the outcomes. A lot of the early evaluations done on any kind of leadership program all focus more on the inputs. We have the benefit of having a rich dataset and some time now where we can start looking at outcomes. So we first start looking at the percentage of Leadership Academy fellows that have been placed as a principal. So 41% of all of those that have participated in the Leadership Academy as fellows have been placed in a head principal position role. So if we think back to our 10 openings per year, basically four out of those 10 openings are being filled by Leadership Academy alumni per year. The second, we want to look at our retention of our Leadership Academy fellows versus our non-Leadership Academy fellows as we've placed them in the principal role. So we, we are expending capital here to develop our leadership. Are they staying with the district? When I look at the retention rates between leadership fellows, those principals that have attended the Leadership Academy and those that have not, there's no statistical difference in the retention rates. However, when I start looking at who we are placing in the principal role, we find that 60% of Leadership Academy alumni who are eventually placed in a head principal position never served as a school-based administrator prior to their involvement in the Leadership Academy. So this provides a little bit of evidence that we may be tapping a secondary pipeline of school leadership for those that are not already school-based administrators. We also looked at the diversity in the district among our administrators during our enrollment or our participation with the Leadership Academy. When we look at all of our administrators, so this is APs, administrative assistants and head principals, the percentage of minority administrators has decreased since our initial involvement and 54% of all of our minority administrators in those three roles are Leadership Academy alumni. The story's a little different at the principal level, though. When we look at the principal level, again, the percentage is down from 2010. So in 2010, 14.5% of our head principals were minority. In 1718, at the beginning of 1718, 9% of our admin, of our head principals were members of a minority race. But when I look at this, when you break it out, of those minority candidates that have been placed as principals, 75%, so three out of every four minority candidates that have placed, been placed as principals since 2011 have been Leadership Academy alumni. We also looked at were principals that were Leadership Academy alumni more likely to be placed in our high need schools? So here we looked at student, incoming student achievement before a principal arrives and we were looking at the distribution of performance of these schools before the principal is appointed. What we find are that Leadership Academy alumni are no more or less likely to be placed in a high need schools when we're looking at the scope of all the years involved than non-Leadership Academy principals. We've, we've also taken a look at the impact on student achievement. So what we have found is that as we have a change in administration, the majority of those changes results in decrease in student achievement. But what happens is when we compare the losses in student achievement for schools in which a Leadership Academy alumni is placed in their first head principalship, the amount of loss that we see in student achievement is on par statistically with what happens when we move an experienced principal from a school into a new school. And both of those scores are statistically better than what happens when we move a non-Leadership Academy alumni to their first principalship. We also considered evaluation scores. I want to point out these are evaluation scores, not the team summative scores that include value add and things like that. What we find is that among our fellows that have been placed as head principals, our evaluators are rating them higher, statistically higher than our non-Leadership fellows. However, when we look at how this translates to those that have not moved on to the principalship, we find that there's no discernible difference on these rubrics between leadership fellows and non-Leadership fellows among those that are still assistant principals. So wrapping up and talking about the program highlights, so some of the things that are, the, the programmatic input, so the actual way the process is carried out combines a theoretical component that's classroom work with UT professors, as well as a practical component that's a mentorship in the school system. So this is the gold standard really for any kind of principal development program. So the UT Leadership Academy meets this. I'd also like to point out that in our qualitative work with the fellows that have been placed as head principals, they cite the leadership, all but two of them cite the Leadership Academy as one of the drivers to what they feel got them to that role. We also still have high district demand, so we still see that the program can be selective, that our staff members are still interested in applying. We have some evidence that this is serving as a secondary pipeline for staff that are not currently school-based administrators. We have evidence of positive impacts on student outcomes and positive impacts on principal performance when we measure performance on rubrics. Our areas for considerations, one of our concerns is on placement rates. We've had internal conversations about why this might be. It may be our selection criteria for those involved, but this is definitely an area where we can improve. Again, when you go back to the stats, we're batting about 450. We'd much rather be batting 1,000. When we also look at areas of consideration, we see no discernible difference in performance among assistant principals that have been through the Leadership Academy and those that haven't. This is not necessarily a surprise because the Leadership Academy curriculum is kind of built around that head principal role. So it's not necessarily designed to create high performing assistant principals, per se. Finally, district partnership and transparency. So again, back through the qualitative analysis we did, our fellows that participate in this program would really like more transparencies into why they're placed in certain schools, why certain people have been chosen to serve as their mentor. The last thing is a district partnership. With changes in leadership and everything, we want to make sure that the program is geared towards our current goals, not goals under previous regime. All it takes is for us to provide the input, make sure that we're getting what we want. So there's a list of references and the remaining time can be used for questions.
Okay, I'm sure there are some, Ms. Roundtree, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, I'm looking at the, I'm not looking at the presentation, Mr. Sattler, which I appreciate this information, I'm just, I'm looking at the findings.
Mm-hmm.
And so I want to make sure that I'm clear on this, that essentially that there might have been a slight increase in student achievement where a Leadership Academy alum served as a principal, but then there was a wash after that, is that correct? The, the data sort of faded out?
So the student achievement data, we see a statistically significant difference in year one of a principal placement and it persists into year two. After that, we don't have enough data to say one way or the other.
Okay.
What I...
And what was your, what was your statistical significance? Was it .05?
So we do a power analysis to keep our type one error rate below 80%. So we set, we set our criteria based on that, it's in the, the technical reports.
Okay, I don't think I have a copy of that.
Okay, we did provide it, we'll make sure you get it. But, but we make sure that we're, we're not biasing results by having too many or too few data points in our data system, so we do a pretty rigorous power analysis to set those cut points.
Okay, and then my other question about that specifically was when you were doing the comparison between the Leadership Academy alumni and the non-Leadership Academy principals, did you look at number of years of service as an administrator?
So we included some of that and there wasn't a compelling reason to continue it in the actual model. We looked at a lot of, was I an assistant principal before my enrollment in the Leadership Academy? Did that lead to a higher likelihood of higher scores and things like that? There was no statistical significance in any of that.
Was there any statistical significance in the number of years of teaching experience? Did you all flush that out?
That, that was something we could not capture. The way things are set up in our current system, if, if everyone was in Knox County for their entire career, we could do that, but based on the data system we have, it's a little hard to track down how much years of actual teaching experience anybody has, so we could not do that analysis.
Okay, and Terry told me, I guess the full report came via email and I'll double check and make sure I got it. So I appreciate you sort of clearing that, clearing that up. I just think that would be, if we were able to look at that, I think that might also be a confounding piece in this puzzle, you know, if someone has 20 years of experience and they go into the Leadership Academy, how is that impacting their outcomes versus someone that only has four years of teaching experience? Am I, you know?
Right.
And as you said, you all don't have the ability to look at that.
Right, and, and you know, what we can see is that, we, we see it in our teacher scores, we see it in our administrator scores, there, there's a big learning curve to all of this, right? So what happens is first four years, especially at the teacher, we have rich datasets here at the teacher. We can talk about the first four or five years of a teacher development, there's, there's a distinct curve in all of these outcome data. And then we kind of hit a plateau either because we're at the end of the measurement of the systems we're using, you know, if these things top out at five, you know, there, there is a real ceiling to measurement that can be done with these tools. But what it appears to me, and this is similar to a finding we found with our TAP system, is that something like the Leadership Academy is providing support, network and a bit of a theoretical basis that's helping people kind of get to the top of the curve faster. So personally, I don't have the data, but I would believe that this is a structure that gets people to their potential a little faster. So in terms of long-term gains, and this is, this is my hypothesis, right? Based on other things I've seen, not based on the data associated with this study. What, what I believe is happening is we are giving people the tools and a network they need to get up the learning curve slightly faster. I would anticipate if we go five, six years out, we'll start seeing those, the differences in performance diminish. But the question is, is those, are those two, three years where we're getting to the top end of performance, is that worth it to us as a district? I think that's the real question for people.
Thank you.
Next was Ms. Deathbridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question, you've pretty much answered. It's like it provides us with a pool of qualified principals that's gone through this process, so when the vacancies become available, we have better, more experienced, well, not experienced, because it may not be experienced, but more ready, able-bodied people to take those positions, is that what I'm hearing you say?
So for sure, in the, in the data, we have the evidence to say, I, I have enough evidence to comfortably say that in the first couple of years, someone that has been placed in that principal role that has been through the Leadership Academy has a network, some knowledge, and they've, they've spent some time with one of our better principals in the district, so they've spent that year mentorship. So by doing that, I feel like they have a richer pool to draw from when they're making those split decisions that that position requires on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, I also noticed you said that the minority percentage has gone down, but I also know that some of them are systems principals, which I think you said was not a part of this because you were dealing with principals, and then some have left the system, period, because I believe that whether we realize it or not, this experience is beneficial to their resume, which means they have been picked off. I know some people are leaving the system, going to other places, and some have left to go to other schools within the surrounding areas.
That's correct. When you look at, we've had 80, 80 people, counting our current cohort, involved with the Leadership Academy. So 68 of those are still with the district, nine of those individuals are no longer with the district, so they, they've moved on to other things, and then we have three that are back in teaching positions.
Okay, but they're, but they have gone through the experience and are more ready to take leadership roles in their schools where they are working, would you say?
I, I...
It just depends on the, I guess...
I do think it depends somewhat on the person, right? Because, because if I were to say it was totally the Leadership Academy, and again, I can't causally say anything.
Right.
But it, but it is a little concerning to me that we're talking about four out of, four out of a cohort of 10 that, that are placed. So there is some cause for concern there. I think the, the question has to be answered, can we address that concern through our selection criteria so that we can get 10 out of 10 people that we feel are, that this process is prepared for that next step?
But that would depend on availability.
Yes.
I mean, you can only place them if they have an opening.
That's correct, but, but we are averaging 10, 10 and a half openings per year, so...
Okay.
Although it fluctuates year to year, long-term, we're talking about 10, 10 and a half openings per year.
Okay, and I think you said to the, we don't, they're not really placed in high, low performing schools?
So this is looking at the course of all of our placements. So when you look at it, the distribution of student performance in those schools in which Leadership Academy alumni are serving, it's representative of the district. So we have Leadership Academy alumni serving in some of the highest performing schools and definitely some of the lowest performing schools and every school in between. So it's not, we are not concentrating Leadership Academy fellows in high performing schools or low performing schools. We are placing them in the full range of schools we serve within the district.
Okay, I have, I know, all I know is that I have been to several schools where they are and a lot of them seem to be doing a great job and people like them and they have made some advancements within their school. And so that was my question, because when we go around and visit, a lot of our schools that are doing great have, have the Leadership Fellows in those schools.
And currently, our, our innovation schools, which are our priority schools in the state, you know, three of the four principals at those schools are Leadership Academy alumni. But, but again, the scope of what I'm, the, the question I'm trying to answer covers everything from 1112 to present day. So when I look at all of those placements across the whole, whole time... across the whole, whole time, there i- there is no statistical difference in the distribution of schools served.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Ms. Allen?
Um, yes, this kind of, um, goes off of what Ms. Roundtree was asking, was there any comparison based on the performance of the mentor principals that they worked with?
So the one thing we wanted to make sure of, um, and we, and this is highlighted in the longer technical report, too, part of the theory of action of this thing is that we're placing our mentor, or our fellows with high-quality mentors, so we want to make sure our mentors were all in the top half of the district, top quarter of the district. For the most part, all of them were, there were a few exceptions, I think, uh, if memory serves me right, about ten percent of our fellows weren't with, uh, a principal that was rated in the top half of the district that year. So there was not a lot of variation between our metrics of performance of who, uh, who a Leadership Academy Fellow was actually serving under, so we did, we did not do that analysis because we did not feel there was enough variance there.
Was there a comparison based on degrees they had earned prior to the Leadership Academy? And I ask that because, um, I believe there were two who were, were already working on PhDs, there were at least eight who were, who already had an EDS, and some who were already working on their EDS, so I wonder if there was any comparison based on those prior-
So we, we have done, uh, a lot of prior studies outside of this one about impact of advanced degrees on both teacher performance and administrator performance, and our findings mirror many, many national findings that your actual attainment of an advanced degree has very little impact on any of those outcome measures, so we did not control for it.
And my last question is, uh, in the interest of full disclosure, were there any of those who worked on this report who have any relationship to any of the principals who have been through the Leadership Academy?
So I will say, my wife is a Leadership Academy alumni, um, and I am the only one that worked on the actual project.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had six classes that have graduated, correct?
Uh, y- you're in your eighth right now, so you've had seven come through.
We've had at least the point I was gonna make, you made some reference to, uh, having problems finding data, uh, past the second year, was that just in one given area, or you, you had all the information available?
Right, so, so what I, what I need to do when I'm looking at, say, evaluation scores or student outcome, so I need someone that's been in the Leadership Academy and then been a principal for three years to impact those things. When you start talking about that, we're getting down towards single digits of the number of people we're talking about, so statistically, we lose the critical mass necessary to actually detect differences between performance.
Okay, all right, let me ask you this. What percent of all the participants, now, up through the last graduating class, what percent of all participants moved to an administrative position other than the one that they might have held when they were in the Leadership Academy? Now, I know you talked about people moving to head principals.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm talking about people that were, that were either assistant principals, stayed in that position, or if they were a classroom teacher, did they move into, like, assistant principalship? That would, that would qualify.
Right, right, so, so I'll try to answer your question, I don't have the exact number, but, so when we talk about the Leadership Academy, well, I'm thinking, I only have the data on the, those that we, we moved to the principalship. But you know, the, the placement rates have been traditionally a hundred percent, so everyone that has applied or, or gone through the Leadership Academy in the past has been placed as an assistant principal.
So we don't have anyone at the present time waiting?
We do at the, we do at the present time, so we have nine that have left the district, and then three that are no longer in administrative roles.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I, I don't think you understand what I'm saying. Do we have anybody who has completed the Leadership Academy and is not in an administrative position?
Yes, we have, we have three of them.
We only have three people?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, one other question, what percent of the participants in these classes came from outside Knox County?
Uh, that I don't know, again, the scope of our study was on our district's perspective, so I don't have any statistics on the number of people involved that came from different, that, that were-
If you looked at the number, I'm assuming you looked at total number in each of the, the classes?
Well, again, our research was fo- focused on our district staff.
So somebody came from somebody, if, if there were fifteen participants in the class, and only twelve of them came from Knox County, you, you wouldn't even look at them?
We, we only included the twelve because this is a district look at, at the outcomes. So from the research question standpoint, um, to some extent, our, our district is unconcerned with how those five performed in their district, we don't have access to any of their data, I can't tell what their outcomes were, I don't know a lot of the details that are necessary for the, for the analysis, so therefore, the analysis was specifically constrained by people that entered the Leadership Academy as district employees.
Okay, all right, um, I guess I have one more question, but, but it's not for you, it's related to this, it's my understanding, uh, that we're going to be discussing this at the, the next, next month's meeting?
It is, it is on the agenda for Monday night, work session.
Well, do we, I guess my question would be for the, uh, Law Director or for the Superintendent, whoever chooses to answer. At the present time, I've been told that we did not have a copy of the original contract, uh, we only had a signature page, are we beyond that, or did we just have a signature page and a concept plan?
Mr. Deppler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McMillan, um, we, our office has reviewed a, uh, a single-page contract with a attachment that is a multiple-page concept paper. Uh, that was from late 'oh-nine, early 2010, um, and that is my understanding is what forms the basis for the current, uh, leadership program agreement between the district and the University of Tennessee, um, but that's what we have right now. I don't know, did you have another question or?
Well, okay, uh, I guess, the, with the Law Department, uh, since that's what we have right now, would, would your department consider this to be a valid contract?
If this, if this agreement were to come, uh, uh, if this agreement, our, our opinion is that this agreement would need to come before the Board. It's our understanding that it did not come before the Board, uh, back in 2010, um, but there was, there was a different, uh, practice in place apparently at the time, uh, it's our understanding that, uh, the, the budget constraints did, did come before the Board at least once, perhaps twice, um, but I can tell you definitively that if this Board wants to continue with the, uh, with the Leadership Academy, uh, a new contract needs to be, um, um, you know, promulgated, or, uh, some type of an amendment needs to be done to the, to the current agreement. Because frankly, even if there were no questions at all with regard to this agreement, um, it's, it's nearly a decade old at this point, and, and, you know, current contracts that come before this Board are usually reviewed every five years.
Okay, well, um, did you say, did I understand you correctly, that you believe that, that it didn't come, the agreement didn't come before the Board? I know that, but that is, is what you were saying, that the money was approved by the Board to, in order to do this? Now, I'm not talking about being approved back at, at budget time in the general, general budget, I'm talking about specifically, the Board approved the money that was designated to go for this particular project.
I can't, I can't specifically answer the, the budgetary question, I need to ask that to somebody else, I thought it was more general.
I don't believe, I don't believe it did, uh, I mean, I was on the Board, I, I don't recall that, that being the case. As a matter of fact, and I know what you're referring to, uh, as to why it did not come before the Board, there, there, there was a, a particular reason. I, uh, I guess that, that might be in and of itself, might be debatable, because it involved a significant amount of money, and other projects, although they had been approved in the, the general budget, still specifically had to come before the Board, and they had to travel across the street to get the approval of the County Commission before they were vouched. That's my understanding, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Norman, thank you, Mr. Depp, Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, sorry we drug you through that legal stuff there, Mr. Sandler. You mentioned a couple of things that I'd just like for you to get a little deeper in, uh, you, you used the phrase positive student outcomes, so how, how do you characterize that?
Well, so I like to point out, again, so when we're talking about things, there's, you know, I try to be precise in the language, and if I wasn't, I apologize, but we're talking about evidence of, um, positive impacts on student outcomes, so when I look at what happens, sixty percent of the time when we make a principal change, our schools experience a decrease in student achievement. So we partition the data to look at the size of that, those drops when I moved an experienced principal, so they've served at one of our other schools, we moved them to another school, what drop in student achievement would we expect there? And it was about eight tenths of a point proficient advance. So then I look at, when I put a Leadership Academy Fellow in a school in their first placement, so out of Leadership Academy, served some time as an AP, this is my first head principal job, the drop in student achievement was about point six-five, point six percentage points. When I look at someone that was a first-year principal that served as an AP but never in the Leadership Academy, that drop is more on the, the scale of one percentage point. So when I say there's evidence of positive impact, I'm talking about that there is a statistical difference in the amount of drop that occurs in a school in which you place a Leadership Academy Fellow in their first year compared to the median impact, the impact of the median school for someone that is not a Leadership Academy alumni.
Okay, when, uh, what specifically are you using for student achievement, or give me an example, say, in the elementary school?
We're using, uh, combined results from science, math, and ELA, T, or T-CAP.
Okay, and in high school?
The, the state EOC test, so all the math, ELA, and science, uh, EOCs, state EOCs.
Okay, good, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask Mr. Sandler if there was, so in the full report, I was able to pull it up, um, you write that the demand for Leadership Academy appears to have remained relatively high, and that was, I guess, solely on the quant piece of the analysis based on the number of applicants, but, um, in the qual portion of the analysis, did you all dig into why folks were, were applying? Because I think for, um, a lot of people, there may have been a myriad of reasons, and I think, um, my hypothesis would be the jump in salary may have been a factor in folks applying.
So, so we tried to track some of that, um, but it, but again, we're, we're pulling from a small sample, like, like we're talking about, at most, we surveyed seventy people, right? So these, these are small samples.
So, can I stop you there? So you didn't survey all the previous applicants?
No.
You just, how did you come to survey those seventy then? How did you select your?
So, so these are the principals, these are the principals that were placed, we, we were surveying the principals that had been placed that were Leadership Academy alumni fellows, and the principals that were placed that were not Leadership Academy alumni. So we did not survey any of the fellows that were assistant principals or the other assistant principals in the district at the time.
And you didn't survey, your sample wasn't, didn't include any of the other applicant, the applicants that were not selected, I guess, from what I'm looking at from the data?
Not purposefully, some of them would have been, because they would have been promoted to an assistant principal role, even though they did not go to the Leadership Academy. Or no, no, you're correct, you're correct. Um, so there are some principals, so when I look at the data, sixty-eight percent of the principals that were placed that did not attend the Leadership Academy, they applied, right, at some point. So that percentage of people would be captured in what you're saying, but again, that was outside the scope of the initial research question, so.
Okay, I just, I'm, I understand by solely looking at, we had X number of applicants, for example, school year sixteen, seventeen, we had sixty-six. Um, while that may speak to the demand being high, I think there really is a missing piece there from the qual side of why are these folks applying? Is it because they have a desire to advance their degree and they get their tuition paid? Did they, were they looking for the increase in salary? I think there's just-
Right.
-that, there's a piece there that's not being captured.
So when we did the collection among the seventy-five I'm talking about, the seventy-five principals, the overwhelming majority of the reasons why they even took a principal position is to serve the school in a leadership capacity, um, the way people self-report, money is not a driver for these roles.
Sure.
And again, am- among that pool of seventy, so not among everyone that applied, but among the people that applied and were accepted, or applied and were appointed principals without attending the Leadership Academy.
So apply, tell me again the number that were applied and didn't get accepted but were appointed to be principals?
So we had-
What was that number?
We had, let me get this right, so we had forty-four principals appointed since eleven, twelve, that were not fellows in the Leadership Academy, so among that number, sixty-eight percent had never, never applied to the Leadership Academy.
That's what, um, I guess it just seems like it would be just in this, I mean, I understand you had specific research questions in your analysis, I get all that, I'm a doc student, um, I just feel like there's, for this Board, it might be wise for us to get some feedback from those folks that weren't selected, a larger pool to really see, you know, what were their motivating factors, what are some other things that we need to do, um, with PD and development for our staff as well, and to figure out sort of, you know, what are the moti- motivating factors? I don't think that money would be the top factor, but I'm sure that if you are looking at the range, I know from speaking to Dr. McIntyre, there are districts that are using this program at UT and are not providing that same large jump to their fellows, and it's more budgetary, um, budget-friendly for them to do it in that manner, and I don't think that their outcomes have been negatively impacted. So that's just a consideration for this Board, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I was just thinking about the question that Mike asked about the contract or agreement or whatever, because we were both on the Board when this was discussed, and it was an agreement, I think, because we had a lack of qualified candidates in a pool of, of people that wanted to be principals, and this was one way that UT Knoxville and Knox County Schools could work together to come up with a program that could better prepare, uh, future administrators for positions when they became available. I don't think it anything underhanded, or anything, was trying to get something, it was to help Knox County Schools come up with a pool of qualified candidates. Now, there's only ten that, that was able to be selected out of a, and, and as people go through the process, I think more people are understanding the value of what's going on with this program, and they want to participate. and they want to participate. I have some people I know that are now teachers and systems administrators or whatever, and they just like, like the ideal of being able to go through the program so that when positions become available, they are ready and willing to go. Uh, I think it's more of a passion, it's a more of wanting to be administrators. In fact, I have a teacher that really is not interested, but her principal sees the value of them being able to go through this process because they see that they have the, the passion, the capability, and the experience. So, she's trying to get her to understand that, and then she's a minority. To be honest with you, they didn't have a, a large pool of qualified, they felt like qualified minorities that were interested and ready to be placed in positions. So, that also helped make it a little bit more meanable to what, what is needed inside Knox County, because we know that, that there is a need, it's going to always be a need. I've already understand that the teachers pool in the future is getting smaller and smaller. Everybody's not wanting to be teachers or they don't want to be administrators. They don't even want to have anything to do with education because of all the things and changes that's coming down from the federal government, state, and everybody else. So, it's getting smaller and smaller and smaller. So, the more people that we can have that's ready to go and willing and wanting to learn to be better educators and leaders in Knox County was the purpose of this agreement. And I think, uh, at this time, UT Knoxville took the blunt of the expense for this. We, they took, they paid for a lot of this. We paid, I'm, I know we pay, we do, it's not free, but I'm, I know that they are doing a lot of this at the expense of University of Tennessee. So, and then people have been able to get, like you said, their EDSs or whatever, even if they've already working on it. Some of them are able to finish it while they working to become better, um, uh, leadership fellows. So, there's a lot of benefit to this, even though we having to, uh, probably pay some things and it's all about cost, and that's fine, but, uh, we need to look at what we can do to continue it, even if we have to reduce the number of people, reduce what we do. But I think it's been an overall benefit to Knox County School. I think that it's something that we need to, um, uh, look at how to make it better. Uh, all these questions we have, we need answers, of course we do. But, um, uh, before we think that it was a contract that was made and we didn't know anything about it and we, it was underhanded, it was not. It was something that was discussed. It was something that we vetted before we even agreed for them to move forward on this. So, that was back in twenty-ten, and yes, if things have changed and we have to have a contract, let's look at it and go for it and make it legal so that everybody can feel a little bit more comfortable about, about the process. But yes, in twenty-ten, we did discuss this and it was something that we wanted to move forward on.
Thank you. Ms. Owen.
What is the difference in our candidate pool today compared to two thousand and ten?
When you, when you reference candidate pool, can you give me specifics on what your, what your, who are you considering a candidate for these positions?
I'm asking, of the number of positions we have and the number of applicants who are qualified, how does it compare to the same of two thousand and ten?
When, when we talk about qualifications, you're talking about certified to be an administrator?
Yes.
All right. So, I don't have the data from ten, eleven, but I do know right now, currently, we have two hundred and fifty-two teachers in the district with a, or, when I say teachers, I'm talking about school-based staff. So, they could be instructional coaches, um, student support service staff. We have two hundred and fifty-two teachers with an administrative certification that are not currently school-based administrators or district staff.
Uh, let me, let me ask it differently. What is the difference in the applicant pool?
In the number? I, so, the, the data would be available, we had roughly eighty applicants, uh, the first year in ten, eleven, and then...
The applicant pool for our positions that we have open?
That, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I think you're, you're asking about a human resource question?
Dr. Drummond, would you have that data possibly?
Dr. Drummond.
Or could we look into that and find out what the difference is in our, in our applicant pool for those positions that we have open?
Are you clear, Ms. Drummond, what Ms. Owen's asking you?
I'm, I'm, what I'm asking is, if we were, if we were looking to find a larger pool of qualified applicants for the positions that we had, for our administrative positions, have we done that? Do we have a larger pool of qualified applicants than we had in two thousand and ten? So, I, I want to see if it is, if it has significantly changed, if that was one of our goals.
And I, I believe...
Whether we're meeting that goal.
I believe the challenge in that will be defining what is, is qualified, because from what I understand, anyone can apply to any open position in Knox County Schools. So, qualification isn't determined until you do a screening of the initial applicants and anything like that. Am I correct in that?
You have to have a certification to apply for certified position.
Right, right. And that, that's the two hundred and fifty-two educators who meet the minimum benchmark for applying for that.
Meeting the benchmark and applying for the position are not the same thing?
So, so are you just asking for the number of applicants?
I want to know about the number of applicants, whether our applicant pool is currently sufficient, whether it has increased from two thousand and ten. So, do we have an applicant pool now that is greater than we had in two thousand and ten, an applicant pool of qualified individuals that is greater than what we had in two thousand and ten? Have we met the goal that was just stated?
The goal back then was everybody moved within the system and they use buddies, use buddies to get principalship. This way, they are at least going through, I'm sorry, but that was just my understanding of why this was necessary.
Mr. Sattler.
So, I, I've got one additional clarification. Are you asking about the number of applicants for head principal positions or assistant principal positions?
For all administrative positions that this, that they would be qualified for. Also, how many fellows did not have an administrative endorsement when they first applied to Leadership Academy?
I don't have that information for you, but we will get it for you.
So, we don't know how many of those people who applied to the Leadership Academy were already certified to be administrators?
I would assume, I, I will get, I will get that data for you.
Thank you.
Rather than guess.
Okay. Ms. Hill?
This may be, uh, outside of the scope of your study, uh, but when we were looking at the funding involved, if I'm not correct, I think Great Schools Partnership had, had something to do with initially, uh, funding and getting this off the ground, I believe.
Okay. I stand corrected.
And would, would you have information on, um, financially, how that breaks out as far as, um, uh, where all the cost, um, of the program is incurred? I mean, I know that UT has, has some, that we carry some, that some of it's in kind.
So, so when we look at the itemized costs, the, the majority of our, our costs are tied up in paying the salaries of the fellows while they're in the fellowship. Um, we do not pay with an agreement through UT, we do not pay tuition fees to UT, which is decreased over the life of the project, probably the cost, the cost by roughly twenty percent. Uh, so, we, we have saved money, we have not been charged for tuition. But roughly the cost is around eight hundred thousand dollars per year, uh, currently.
But you wouldn't know, uh, in the, of everything included in this, tuition and everything, what percentage it actually is that, that KCS...
Right.
Pays toward this program.
I believe we have the itemized numbers, but I do not have it. I would have to...
Okay.
Discuss with Mr. Spencer. But we, we could probably get that information.
Mr. Spencer, do you have that or do you need more time to prepare it?
I only have our costs.
Okay.
But our costs are, I don't have these costs, what they're... I can talk about our costs.
And I, and I think, I, I think I understand our, our costs. I just wonder in the big picture. So, are we picking up fifteen percent of a hundred dollar, or a hundred percent, um, uh, total cost? Are we picking up eighty percent of...
We're, we're picking up closer to eighty, eighty percent.
Eighty percent. Okay. That was the number I was looking for, of the cost of the...
Correct.
Administering...
Yeah. So, so that, so that, those costs would include the salary for the fellow, stipend for the mentor, materials, benefits.
Okay. So, this whole, in, in very simple terms, if this program cost one hundred dollars...
Eighty percent is coming from Knox, eighty dollars is coming from Knox County.
Eighty dollars of it is, is...
Correct.
Is KCS, and then the other twenty dollars is UT through, uh, tuition and that...
Correct.
That expense. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McMillan, with your permission, I'm going to go to Ms. Horn and then come to you since she hasn't had a chance to voice her question or concern. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is really more of a comment than a question. I think the big, big red flag to me is, um, that only forty-one percent of new principal openings have been filled by the Leadership Academy alumni. So, an average of four per year have been placed, according to the findings.
Correct.
So, I think that my, I wonder if that goes back to Ms. Owen's question about, it looks, if you look at the percentage of alumni that have been placed over time, that percentage has gone down steadily, um, over time. So, I think that I would be interested to know, um, as Ms. Owen has asked, what the applicant pool looked like at that time. Because when you look at this, at the, at the beginning, the question was asked in the findings, is this still needed? Well, obviously, we do have principals and assistant principals and teachers still applying, but if you look at, at over time, what's happened, it looks like we're not depending on this as maybe we were at the beginning. So, um, I'll be interested to see those numbers and see if that has a correlation to what's happening now versus then. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Mr. McMillan, I'm going to go to you and then over to Ms. Owen.
May, may I please make one small clarification? Uh, again, I, I think precision in what we're talking about matters. And I want to be clear that, uh, the find, the finding you were discussing is not that the Leadership Academy per se has, uh, the district would benefit from the Leadership Academy. The, the finding is the district would probably benefit from some kind of principal development activity to fill these ten openings per year that we're having. So, a minor point of clarification, but I think it's important to the, the type of work we do.
But it is, it has been in the past, one hundred plate, one hundred percent placement of the Leadership Academy grads, right?
In administrative roles until this past year.
Okay. So, they're getting a position either as an AP or a principal when they come out of the Leadership Academy?
Trad- traditionally, that is true. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And now, we're back to Mr. McMillan. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief comment, uh, in reference to what Ms. Dethrich said. Uh, she's exactly right about, and it was, uh, it was a different board back then. The only people that are now on the board, Ms. Dethrich, Ms. Fugit, and myself, were there at the inception of this. And, uh, what she said was, it was explained to us, or, or the board was led to believe that we had a shortage of trained individuals that could become principals. And because of that, that was the, that was the, the logic reasoning behind establishing this and, and sending people through. Now, I didn't say that it, that it was, in my remarks, I did not say that it was, uh, underhanded. I was just trying to point out that, at the time, the superintendent believed because of something in the policy. And I think sometimes, uh, m- maybe he took policy sort of stronger than it, than it actually is, uh, sort of to the level of, of maybe even, uh, towards state law. But, when this amount of money was involved, I think that it should have come before the board for approval as well as gone across the street. That's just my opinion. I'm not any attorney or anything, but, but we do it on all kinds of other matters. Why we would not have done it on this, and more particularly because I'm sure at, at the time, that the board would have approved it. So, anyway, that's, that's how I would say it.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Owen?
Oh, I forgot what my question was.
Oh.
I don't actually have a question. I was just going to let everyone know that, um, I have asked several times for that same financial information that Ms. Hill was asking for. And, um, I have put a, an open records request to UT that I sent today. So, we should have that in the next seven days.
Thank you. Okay. Mr., sorry, Superintendent Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of board. And, and I'd like to say thank you to Clint and the, the folks in the research and evaluation and accountability department for the work they do. You know, one thing I talked about was, uh, um, early on in the process, was bring, bringing the board information. Uh, we want to be completely transparent with everything and try to bring the board the information where you could make, um, the very best decision and have you informed to that point where you could make the very best decision. I think Clint and folks have done a really good job. Uh, we as a staff, and I, we've talked about this a little bit. I, I certainly agree with, uh, uh, what Mr. McMillan said in terms of an agreement. Um, and, uh, I think the proper way to proceed with this, if we're going to continue, is to have an agreement that we would bring to the board for the board's approval and go to the, uh, commission so that we could be completely transparent about that process. I think, uh, there are some other issues that need to be addressed, and we've talked a lot about cost. And I know there's a, a page in the budget dedicated to Leadership Academy. Uh, uh, just probably in my mind, a very loose interpretation of, well, if I approve the budget, I approve this page, therefore I approve this agreement. So, um, you know, I, I want to make sure we don't proceed that way if we do this. But, um, so, so the, I guess what I would like an opportunity to do, we feel like there's merit in the program, uh, is to bring back a proposal to the board. Uh, again, we've talked about cost and, and Gary, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's about nine hundred and nine thousand dollars, something in that neighborhood that, in our budget for this year for the Leadership Academy. Um, I, we think, and I think, you know, it could be done, if we're going to continue this, be done much cheaper. I mean, over time, uh, and then Mr. McMillan asked for this information, we sent it to the board. You know, there's been about six point eight million dollars, I think, spent, uh, that we've spent for, you know, the Leadership Academy. So, uh, and again, I, that's, and then talking with staff, sort of use the term, it's, it's kind of like the Cadillac model. Uh, we don't have a Cadillac budget, but, uh, we feel like that it can be done, uh, much more efficiently if we were to look at, uh, current vacancies, like in the assistant principal ranks, if we've got AP positions, uh, that we know we were going to fill, or we've also utilized administrative assistant positions, and sometimes those, those positions go to, uh, APs. But if we're going to put assistant principals in positions, uh, for the principalship, um, feel like this is, this is good training, uh, for that if it's done in, in a, in a more efficient way and using those vacancies so that we don't have a nine hundred and nine thousand dollar price tag. Um, you know, we may, uh, some years, I know we talked four out of ten, uh, this year in terms of vacancies. Um, I know in the agreement, it talks about ten to twelve. Well, maybe we want to reserve the right to have up to ten, but we might not want to put ten in, in, in every year. Uh, so I think that would be, um, would be something we would need to look, to look at or, in, in terms of the proposal. We've talked a lot about sometimes people coming in with not very much teaching experience. Maybe in terms of our selection process, we need to, uh, make sure that, you know, if you're going to qualify for this, that you've have, um, that you've had ample, uh, classroom experience, uh, so that you understand the ins and outs of, of being a teacher and of the classroom. Um, so we, um, we may want to look to, uh, in terms of what the program offers, we really need principals, qualified candidates for high priority schools. Sometimes the, uh, the, the candidates that have gone through the program might not want to serve, uh, in a high priority school. That's, that's what we need. So, we might need to look at our selection process. We need turnaround principals. The people that go into a school and they're able to make the changes so that that school, uh, it gets turned around. You know, we, we, we know we've got those priority schools and, and, uh, the, the folks in part of the curriculum need, would possibly need to be too. What can we add into that curriculum that, uh, that helps us develop a turnaround principal? Uh, so maybe in terms of, if we're going to continue this, we, we work with UT to say, hey, this is what, you know, this is what we need, and you help us, uh, to deliver that. And, and we do it, like I say, in a much more efficient, uh, from a cost standpoint, much more efficient way. Uh, we don't, I, I think another thing we can look at, you, you don't... We don't, I, I think another thing we can look at, you, you don't get a raise because you go through the Leadership Academy. If you're, whatever your salary is, as a, as an assistant principal, or if you're an AA, administrative assistant, and I think we pay those on a teacher's salary with maybe a few extended days. You know, that's what, you're, you're getting your tuition free, you're getting your training. So, we're not gonna pay you any more than what we would normally pay you to do the job that you're doing. So, I think that's another way to, you know, to look at the, to look at this, to get that price tag down so that we can provide them. But the, we, we, it's a win-win. If we can get the qualified applicants and, and folks in high priority positions, and we can do it at a much less of our cost than what we're spending, we give the board more money to spend on something else. And we also help ourselves in terms of, of, of getting applicants who, as Clint described, that maybe can go into schools and have a, have a quicker impact. We, you know, when we, we talk about a year, well, two years, you know, it catches up. But look at one year and two years of, of students that we haven't provided what we could have provided. So, you know, one year, you know, in a, in a student's education is, in my mind, is a world of difference because we're, we're all about increasing student achievement and, and eliminating, you know, those disparities and building the positive culture, the things I've talked about since I started talking, and still feel that way. So, so I do feel like there's, you know, there's merit to the program. And it just need, we, we, we need an approved agreement, something the board understands, commission understands, we're completely transparent. And we do this at a much reduced cost than what we have been doing. So, I mean, and again, if the board, you know, wanted to ask me to say, hey, you know, Bob, develop us a proposal that comes back and does what you talked about doing, you know, we certainly, you know, are willing to, to work on that and, and bring that back to the board for your consideration. I'm sorry, you took so much time.
No, thank you. Ms. Roundtree did have one other question, I think, for Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. I don't know if you can answer, answer this off the top of your head, Mr. Spencer. I was just wondering, do you know if the mentorship stipend has been in place with every cohort? Do you know that?
It has.
It has? And, and what is that stipend?
It's five thousand dollars for the principal.
Okay, and thank you, that was all I needed. And then I guess this question would be directed, I guess, more towards Superintendent Thomas. We, if you're a principal and you have an assistant principal hired on to work with you, whether you have a stipend or not, I'm assuming they would get some sort of mentorship. I'm just, I'm thinking about this from putting on my student hat. I have, you know, I have a chair of my committee and I don't think she gets, she's not getting paid any extra stipend for being my chair and mentoring me and guiding me through my process. And so, I'm, I'm just curious about, that piece to me seems very unnecessary. So, if you would, don't care to address that?
Yes, I'd be glad to address that. And, you know, again, it's been a while since I've been, then I've been a principal. But extra set of hands was always great to have around in terms of, we expect, we expect our APs to train under, and our AAs to train under our principals. So, you know, if, we, we, we do that every day. I mean, if you're, if you're not in the Leadership Academy and I'm your principal, I'm training you and I'm not getting paid anything, you know, for it. So, I think that's part of, if, in looking at this proposal, that we would come back and say that, you know, gosh, this is your job. You're an AP or you're an AA, and this is, this is your salary. And we, the expectation is, as a principal, because I'm working there every day, that you, that you are training me and developing me. So, so that's a, and again, we haven't had a whole lot, as a staff, a whole lot of discussion about that. But just, you know, would, would I rather have a person there every day helping me do the job and me not get paid any more than me doing my job and their job too? I think, you know, the answer for me is, you know, bring it on. I want the help and don't worry about paying me anything. So, again, we'll have further conversations about that.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other microphones down. Let me just, I, what? Oh, I just had one question. If the board, we will have this at-work session again on Monday night. But if the board directed you to bring a proposal forth with some of the ideas that you presented, how long would it take before your staff and you could bring that to the board if the board asked for it? Is there a timeline? I know there's been some discussion, but...
We, we, we've talked about this a little bit. I, I don't know, I don't know if it would be ready Monday, Monday night, but certainly by December, you know, board meeting. You know, again, my question is, and I know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but if you got a contract that's not valid, does it make any difference? I mean, the date that it, that's on there, does that make any difference if it's not a valid, you know, valid contract? So, maybe in, in December or January, somewhere in that timeframe.
Well, Mr. DePere, can you address that? And we will have to make some decisions based on what the board directs you to do in November. And the last possible time would be December in order to meet the deadline right with UT. So, can you answer, Mr. Superintendent Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent. Our direction is going to be, I mean, you know, again, there's questions as to whether or not it's a valid contract. But I mean, this, this board and this school system has been operating under this agreement and treating it as some type of an agreement for, you know, seven to eight years. So, out of a, out of an abundance of caution, I mean, our office is going to advise you, as a board, to do something before December thirty-first. So, that's either, you know, put in, put in a new contract, or amend this contract, or vote this contract down, or do something. Because, because that's gonna put this board in the best position possible going forward.
Let me just say then, you know, given, given that, of course, this, you know, we've got a full month to develop something. So, I think we could certainly be, be prepared to bring something at the December meeting, which would be the timeframe that you would need to approve something, an agreement.
Thank you. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker for public forum is Betty Sue Sparks.
Good evening. Distinguished school board members and Superintendent Thomas, thank you for your willingness to serve the children of Knox County. I know your work isn't easy, but it's important and you really are making a difference. We know great schools don't exist apart from great leaders. I wonder what school leader has made the most difference to you? In September nineteen fifty-three, my mother took me by the hand and deposited me into the care of Leon Dyke, who was the principal at Oakwood Elementary School. Now, you can stop counting. I celebrated my seventieth birthday two weeks ago. My mother's, I said, I want to be a principal like Mr. Dyke when I grow up. My friend said, girls can't be principals. My mother said, well, there's Helen Bricksy, and don't forget Hasty Kate Gresham, and what about Mildred Doyle? I started teaching in nineteen sixty-nine at Chrisdenberry Junior High School. I also taught at Fulton High School, which is my alma mater, and at Pond Gap. In nineteen eighty-one, I got a call from Dr. Paul Kelly. He said the school district was partnering with UT in a leadership program targeting, targeting women in administration. He invited me to participate. Dr. Kelly knew leadership matters. Since that time, I've had the honor to serve as principal of KAEC, Moreland Heights Elementary, Cedar Bluff, and Fergate Primary. As an elementary supervisor and later HR director, I've worked with hundreds of wonderful, fabulous teachers and administrators. Since two thousand and ten, I've had the honor of working part-time with the Leadership Academy. I'm so grateful for this deep partnership between the University of Tennessee and Knox County Schools. There are three points I'd like to quickly share with you tonight. First, the Leadership Academy is a strong partnership. We want to know what you need. We want to ensure our programming is meeting the leadership development needs of the Knox County schools, always. I know there's an investment on the part of Knox County schools to offer this professional learning experience for aspiring principals. There's also an investment on the part of the university, the state, and the philanthropic sector. Our community knows how much leadership matters. Second, the Leadership Academy is needed. The analytical report notes that about eleven principal vacancies have been available annually over the past few years, and many more assistant principal positions are vacant each year. According to a report just published by NASSP, the demand for employment of principals will grow six percent nationwide by the year twenty twenty-two. We know that the job of school principal is increasingly challenging, complex, and important. More than ever before, we need trained, thoughtful school principals who have the skills to be effective instructional leaders and ensure educational opportunity for all children. That's our goal every day. This year, in addition to the director, our Leadership Academy fellow and practitioners include Dr. Mary Lynn Derrington, a former principal and superintendent, Dr. James Martinez, a former principal, Dr. Kerry Robinson, former AP and special ed director, Dr. Mary Rouse, retired principal of Tennessee High School in Bristol, Rob Brett, superintendent of Blount County Schools, Nancy Malin, former principal and elementary director, and me. Together, we have more than a hundred fifty years of school leadership experience. Third, the Leadership Academy is working. While there are multiple pathways to leadership positions in Knox County, the Leadership Academy is a strong, proven model that helps meet our increasing leadership needs. In addition to Knox County, we've partnered with Blount County, Anderson County, Lenore City, Miraval City, Union County, and Kingsport City Schools. In addition to our Knox County fellows, we've trained ten fellows from these counties, five in previous years, five this year. The report that is on your agenda this evening paints a compelling picture. Eighty-eight percent of our graduates identify the Leadership Academy as what best prepared them to be a principal. And a remarkable seventy-five percent of all principals of color appointed in the Knox County schools since two thousand and eleven, twelve, are Leadership Academy graduates. Bill Hybels, one of my favorite authors, says, leaders are at their very best when they're raising up leaders around them. I respectfully ask you to continue to raise up leaders through the strong partnership with the University of Tennessee and Knox County schools. I always ask my grandchildren the following question. Did you do anything courageous today? Did you stand up for something you believe in? Today, I guess it was my turn. Thank you so much for your service to our community, and thank you for your, your commitment to excellence in school leadership. I appreciate the opportunity to get to come speak with you tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brenda Owensby.
Point two oh, in answer to your question about statistical significance.
Thank you, Doctor.
I'm Brenda Owensby, and I'm an Knox County citizen. I applaud your decision, Mr. Thomas, to take a look at utilizing the Leadership Academy in a more economical format. My entire presentation is pretty much shot, given what Ms. Roundtree has said and what you've said, because I do think that using the demand for those positions as an indicator, or the applications as an indicator of the demand, is pretty bogus considering the many benefits that the people have in going to the Leadership Academy. I know probably a hundred teachers who have pursued advanced degrees on their own time, at their own expense, who would love to have had their tuition paid. It's interesting that Mr. Spencer indicated that the degrees really don't have an impact on student achievement. About five or six years ago, I came to the board and talked about the damage that was being done with the constant churn of principals and how that was not good for our students. And that pretty much fell on deaf ears. And now, they're saying, oh, yes, there is an impact, but they decrease less if it's a, if it's a, an academy graduate. So, I, I do think that most of the, most of the comments that have been made kind of echo some of the things that, that I, that I wanted to say. I was surprised to find out that we have, I think you said, two hundred and fifty-four certified and, people who are certified as administrators in our school system that are not serving in that capacity. And I frankly encourage us to reach out to those people who went and got that degree on their own and, and became certified as an administrator in an effort to, to provide leadership to our Knox County schools and, and consequently, our, our students. Because if we have ten vacancies a year, of course, that's in the head principal position. And, and I would also say that in terms of businesses, the way that we stop people going through our training and then leaving is that we put a contingency on it. And if we need academy graduates in our high-need school, then when we have an opening at our high-need school, we need to look at those graduates and say, yes, if you're going through this program, then you have a commitment to our high-need school. And if we call upon you, then we expect you to serve there. Starting out, if it, if it keeps all of the benefits, I would say three to five years, or you pay us back how much we paid you to go through this program. So, I, I look forward to seeing some of the ways to approach the, getting that, that kind of leadership information and knowledge to, to our people who aspire to leadership. And like I say, I would, I would reach out to those people who've gone on their own to try to prepare themselves for those, those positions. I do know that some teachers have told me that one of the things that, that really aggravates them is for someone to come in with no experience in their grade levels at the whole school. They may have done some work in a middle school for one or two years, and they come to an elementary school and tell an experienced teacher how to teach reading when that teacher has been teaching reading successfully. And the teacher has to change because, well, they're the principal, or they're the assistant principal who's in charge of that. And so, I think the fact of having experience in the classroom is critical to successful principals and assistant principals because people want to know that you understand them. And unless you walk in their shoes, it's very difficult to reach a true understanding of what they face. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Hopson.
Lauren Hopson, Knox County. It's been a while. I didn't really know what I was gonna say this evening when I got here, so I've kind of just taken notes along the way. And I want, I want to say this before I start, that I want to make it abundantly clear that anything I say about the Leadership Academy is not a criticism of the participants. I know and have been privileged to work with quite a few of them over the last couple of years in my role as KCA president. So, I just want everybody to be very clear on that. I do want to pass along, though, a couple perceptions that, you know, in my role as, as the KCA president over the last two years, that I've heard over and over and over from teachers. One of them is that there is a perception that a lot of the Leadership Academy people come in with less classroom experience than they have. And we're trying to fix a morale problem in our school system. And that is a thing that routinely just continues to keep that morale low. People want to be led by people who can, they truly believe are the academic leaders of their school. That when they're struggling in an academic area, those principals can really help them, rather than just doing an evaluation and sending them along, or giving them a non-renewal or a bad score. The other perception is, is that you have to go through the Leadership Academy to be an administrator, which we know is not true. But that is the general perception out there. But that might have something to do with the large number of applicants. But there's a couple things that stuck out to me in the findings. First of all, one of the areas said, have Leadership Academy participants been reliably and predictably placed into the principal role? And the answer was likely not. A number of Leadership Academy principals is decreasing, and the number of fellows not placed within two years has increased every year since two thousand and twelve. Another item said, were Leadership Academy administrators more likely to have been retained by Knox County schools than those who did not go through the program? And the answer to that was no. We are not keeping them at a high And the answer to that was no, we are not keeping them at a higher rate than the non-fellows. In fact, it seems that almost a quarter of them are no longer head principals in Knox County. And as stewards of taxpayers' money, we need to be extremely aware that we may be training people that, that our taxpayers are not getting their services anymore, and we're paying for that. The report showed slightly better than median change in test scores after they were placed in a school. With the testing debacle going on in its fourth year, I'm not really sure how reliable that data is, and we really need to take that into consideration. But I wanted to share with you my perceptions, because I have three different roles in the school system. I am a teacher, I'm a former KCA president, and I am a parent. As a teacher, I have never worked for a Leadership Academy principal. I've worked for three different principals, one of whom is in the, in the room, and is fabulous, by the way, and a number of vice principals who were never Leadership Academy principals, and they were all excellent. In fact, Nancy Malin trained my second principal, who was principal at my school for many years, and now is out in Farragut. So I feel privileged to work through, work for a number of great administrators who did not go through the academy. As KCA president, I looked over the curriculum and noticed a glaring omission in the curriculum. There is no training on dealing with teacher associations in terms of our memorandum of understanding, due process laws, and how we are a part of that, protections for administrators, and advocacy for public schools and public school students. In fact, one Leadership Academy principal told me that he didn't even know we had an MOU and had never seen a copy of it. How you get to be a principal at a pretty distinguished high school in our county and not know that, I'm not really sure. Also, as a former KCA president, I think the issue of raises is also playing a part of this, because we never seem to have enough money to increase our compensation for teachers to even get in the top 30 of the state, but we are continuing to fund this program. But finally, as a parent, when we have results that don't seem much different in terms of retention or our student achievement, I have to wonder. When I'm paying upwards of $1,500 every year just to keep my kid in an award-winning band program, I have to question investing almost $1 million a year into the Leadership Academy. When we already have 252 employees ready and qualified to be administrators, that we could be training under the tutelage of our current administrators for free. That money would be better spent going into the classroom. When we have schools struggling to get copy paper, we really need to reevaluate our priorities.
Ms. Hopson, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. Can I say one final thing? Am I done, done?
Quick, make it quick.
I do just feel like I need to call a spade a spade, though. Those of us who have been researching education over the last several years know that this program came about as a product of training of our former superintendent through the Brode Academy, and there is great concern about that.
Okay, that is the end of public forum, and we'll start with Mr. McMillan over there for Board Forum. Do you have anything for us, Mr. McMillan? Ms. Hill?
Just a reminder again about the HVA, Chasing the Dragon, November 9th at 6 o'clock.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Horn, Ms. Roundtree. Okay, Mr. Norman.
Where's the cake?
It's back in the pack. I'm sorry, you haven't gotten any yet. Last week was Mr. Norman's birthday, and there is Italian cream cake for anyone that wants it, that...
Wait.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. He's taking it home. Never mind, Janie, we're sending it home with you. Okay, Ms. Owen.
I just wanted to let everyone know about the showings of Backpack Full of Cash that are going on Thursday, November 9th at 6:30 at Pelisipi, Tuesday, November 14th at West High School in the lecture hall at 6:30, Thursday, November 16th at 6:30 at Gresham Middle School, and that is a film exploring the real cost of privatizing America's public schools. It's called Backpack Full of Cash. It's narrated by Matt Damon. Ms. Free.
Ms. Dethridge.
Even though the superintendent said, said this, I just want to also reach out and say congratulations to the client's swearing for being nominated for Life Changes of the Year.
Ms. Cott.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Cottney and Dr. Davis for helping me get all the high schools represented, and we will be recognizing the high school representatives that will correspond with me over the rest of the year on the November board meeting with your guys' permission. So thank you all for your help getting that done, and we hope to make some good communication throughout the rest of the year.
Okay, and to add to Ms. Owen's announcement, if I'm correct, Amy Frog, one of the Metro Nashville School System's school board member, will be one of the participants in the discussion on the November 9th showing of Backpack for Cash, so. Anyway, and I just want to add congratulations to the Powell Girls Soccer and their success this season, and then you go across the Emery Road, and Halls Football made the playoffs, so go Big Red. So, do I?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second? Okay, second, Ms. Horn. All in favor, meetings adjourned.